Trenton Council Meeting, Thursday, November 7, 5:30 PM. This meeting is officially called to order. Let us stand for the flag salute.
I, United States of America and to the Republic, stand on my feet in the individual liberty justice law.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor of the Temple Board in City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Vice President Figueroa-Gettner.
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Present, they present that.
Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, Mr. Clerk, present. Mr. Edward Colloji, Legislative Council.
Present.
And City Attorney, West Bridges.
Present.
Thank you. On your call, Madam President.
Please continue with these locations.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the faith of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this, our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, it's my understanding we have some presentations this evening. Uh, they are... The first on our list is Joanne Kennedy.
Before we begin, excuse me, pardon into disruption. Believe we had a walk-on resolution?
Uh, yes, Madam President, we have two walk-on resolutions.
Let's begin with that.
Certainly. Two walk-on resolutions that we have are Resolution, and this is number 24-475, and this is a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Trenton, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, in support of women's space, communities of light, for the year 2024. And Madam President, if you'd like, I can read them into the record.
The title is fine.
Understood.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Gettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman... Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carry. Moving on to our second walk-on resolution, Resolution 24-476, Resolution consenting to appointment of Maria Richardson as Business Administrator for the City of Trenton.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Gettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carry.
We had, um, the mayor here tonight. If you'd like to give a few words, Mayor, before we continue with the business agency.
Thank you, um, Madam President.
Thank you. Turn the mic on.
Yeah, sorry, red beans go. Uh, good evening, uh, Council President and members, distinguished members of council and, uh, fellow residents of the city. Um, thank you for, uh, voting for, um, uh, Maria Richardson, uh, confirming her as, uh, our Business Administrator. Um, I did prepare something, but I don't think I have to now. Um, but you all know Maria, she's been here since...
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
She's been here since 2018. The capacity is our Recreation Director. Uh, then she took over, um, as our Health, uh, Director as well. She was very instrumental, not only in improving our parks. She's right now in, in the process of refurbishing 26, uh, parks. Initiated that, and our current, uh, Acting Director is carrying that out. Uh, but she also was instrumental in our COVID response. And once Adam Cruz, our beloved, uh, Business Administrator, uh, retired, uh, 90 days ago, Maria took the reins, and I think she's done an extraordinary job. I will add that, um, 20 applicants, uh, applied for that position. Uh, they were screened by DCA with the City of Trenton. They were whittled down to three choices, and Maria prevailed on, on all fronts. We do thank, uh, council for their input and, uh, DCA's, uh, cooperation. And, uh, we are ecstatic that we have now a permanent Business Administrator in the city. Thanks so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to say anything, if you'd like to say briefly?
Good evening, Council Resident and Council Members. I just want to thank you for the trust that you continue to deposit in me. I want to sincerely thank, uh, Mayor Rui Garcia for choosing me for this, uh, new position, to serve the city in a different capacity. I continue to, to look forward to working together with you to enhance the operations of the city, to offer the residents the best services that we are able to afford for the residents and to foster, um, continuous and, and sustainable growth. So thank you all for your trust. I continue to be committed to transparency, accountability, and excellence. So thank you for allowing me to serve in this new capacity, the city that I have called home for 30 some years. Thank you.
We voted to walk in one.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia, you was supposed to check me on that. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia, call for the vote.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I have it? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-476?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Gettner.
We're voting for the approval of it.
Approval.
Okay, yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Web by, um, yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Everybody's a comedian tonight.
I defer to the President.
Oh, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carry.
Go ahead, thank you.
I'm sorry, but I needed to say that I would like to continue to make a grand model for my granddaughter who is here. And thank you to my husband who is here too. So thank you so much.
Before we continue, um, in due form, are there any council members that would like to say anything, um, briefly before we move on to the next, to about Director Richardson? Councilwoman Frisbee.
So, good evening, um, everyone. I just want to say that, um, I'm so glad that, uh, this was an easy yes for me, um, with voting, um, Director. For just to, to take that interim off, you know, off of there. Uh, it was a no-brainer for me. I'm so glad that the city knows the value, knows the treasure that we have in you, and that we did know that hiring from within and utilizing our own, especially when we know that you have the knowledge, you have the understanding, you have the communications and all the tools that you need to help move our city forward. I'm so glad to know that you're here and that you're staying and that you're being elevated as it is so appropriate. Um, I've had the pleasure of walking, not, not working, knowing you in the work that you do, uh, for over, oh, God, my son is 21 years. Um, so it is, um, a pleasure, not grateful, and I commend you and congratulations.
Councilwoman Williams.
I just want to, uh, add that I'm just really happy that we approved you tonight because I think you're doing an exceptional job. But also, I want to thank you for your seamless transition into this. Uh, as Mr. Cruz moved on, uh, it hasn't, you have not lost a beat. This department is functioning just as well as it did before, it would be even better. But also making sure that your replacement, interim Director Paul Harris, was able to get up and running and keep the good works of your previous department. It's so important, particularly with our parks. So thank you so much for what you're doing and look forward to working with you further.
Feliciano, that's señorita. That's what I call her, señorita. Um, like, uh, Councilwoman Frisbee said, this was an easy yes. Uh, we appreciate all of the work that you have done. I want to say thank you for not only this, for you elevating to this position, but for the work that you did in the past, wearing two hats, and you made it look so graceful and so seamless. And I know it wasn't an easy task, so I'm not, I have no doubt that you exceed in this position. And I want to say congratulations, so bravo.
Council Vice President Figueroa-Gettner.
Uh, BA Richardson, I just want to say that, um, we are all proud of you because not only did you do this job well and you have sat into this seat seamlessly, as my colleagues have said, you know, I don't like echoing what everybody has already said. Um, but you lead with transparency, good, bad, or indifference. And that's something that we need in this city. And you do know the city inside and out, you know what the city needs, you exercise that. Um, you're very accessible all the time. You are readily resourceful, and I just know that you were going to lead the city into the direction that we need. And I know that, um, Director Harris is doing the great job that he's doing because he was under your leadership for such a great long time. So I do look forward to everything that you are going to provide for the city moving forward because we need greatness, we need good leadership in the city and everybody. So thank you. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Um, Maria, congratulations again. I did get a chance to pre-congratulate you when, um, I got word that you would be, um, walked on tonight. Um, so I, I'm just always involved in your work in the city. You more than meet expectations and every role that you're in, and you're more than qualified. So congratulations, and thank you for your service.
BA Richardson, we are excited tonight, proud of you and your efforts. You've done a tremendous job, looking forward to seeing you do so much more, your leadership, your authenticity, right, your vision for how you'd like to see things moving forward, working collaboratively with the mayor and with the rest of the administration. Um, I know that we're going up from here, so I'm excited for the continued growth and transition for the city, for this administration. And again, shout out to Paul Harris, who has been under your leadership as well as Dr. Diego. You transitioned from two positions, right, and now into one. And so looking at the work that the both of them have been doing is very encouraging and inspiring, and I'm excited to see what else comes along the way. I know that the best is yet to come. Congratulations. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. Uh, I believe that brings us back to the presentations this evening. And the first presentation we have listed is Joanne Kennedy Brown, Rojo's Roasters, Ginger Peaches, regarding Docket, Resolution 24-447. And to the presenter, I believe, and I'll ask the President now, it'd be a lot of time.
10 minutes for each presentation?
You have 10 minutes for each presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, Council Members and Members of the community. Uh, thank you for having me. First, you're probably like, what are you doing here? So let me explain to you how I got here. I'm the entrepreneur and the culinary developer behind the Ginger Peach, which celebrates its 10-year anniversary this December. I am the head ice cream maker and the entrepreneur behind Melba Ice Creamery in Lawrenceville, and I recently became the new owner of Rojo's Roastery, which was once located in Lambertville, New Jersey. So how did I end up here? I am no stranger to trying to bring my business into Trenton, and I'm going to tell you what made me want to do that. Back in 2016, when Ginger Peach hit its peak, that, that's the business that I am known for. Tons of units are produced out of that store on a daily basis. And when I was trying to hire for our highest paid positions of lead bakers, I had tons of candidates coming from the City of Trenton who applied for these roles. But they couldn't work with us because they couldn't get to my location at the time that the work needed to be done. I realized back then that we had a barrier to entry for us to attract the talent who would be the future of culinary making for me. And one of the biggest things is a lot of these candidates looked like me. And I tried to get into Trenton. I worked on a project where I tried to buy the building that once housed the Hamilton Jewelers right next to Mercer County Community College, and that fell through. But that didn't stop my advocacy for the city or the people who live in it. I continued to work very closely with task. I speak at the high schools for culinary days or talking about careers. And then time went by and a pandemic came, and then I was approached by the person that owns the building that the Starbucks once stood in. Do you know what this person came to me to do? They wanted me to bake on behalf of a Starbucks franchise. My answer was no. Do you know why? Because for too long, the small businesses who are the backbone of the cities around who are overlooked for amazing opportunities and growth within our communities, we are the ones that support the soccer program or go to the high school. And you want me to bake for a major corporation's franchise? Absolutely not. Small World Coffee, who can perform me Rojo's Roastery, One Up One Down, Cafe O'Halla, these are all roasters who live here, who are roasting here. And they weren't put in that space. And whether or not they know that this is the fight we are fighting, this is the fight that I am fighting. So I politely declined. But I said, I've got a better idea for you. Back in March, when Rojo's Roastery flooded back in 2021 from Hurricane Ida, the owner, who's in his 70s, David Waldman, could not carry the company into the future. He asked me to take over. I was overwhelmed, Ginger Peach is busting at the seams. I now am opening a new ice cream shop. I didn't have the time or space, but he gave me the company and asked me to shepherd it into the future. Part of that requires building a roastery. So I said, you need a tenant? I need to build a roastery. And this beautifully aligns with what I've been trying to do for the last eight years. So today, I am here in regards to the resolution to help us make the best space possible. This facility will not only act as a manufacturing facility that will allow us to roast our coffee, not just for my present concepts, but also the wholesale customers that we fulfill, including the Graduate Hotels in Princeton, the W Hotel in Hoboken, and many other small businesses. In addition to that, Ginger Peach moves 60% of its production to this space to help us continue to grow within that and support our different levels of business, whether it's wholesale, nationwide shipping, et cetera. In addition, this space will act as a teaching facility, which was kind of my end goal for all of this. Uh, Mercer County Community College for years has expressed an interest in working closely with us on this, and I love the fact that now it's not just about teaching baking, but teaching roasting, teaching the proper way to make coffee, teaching retail skills. I am incredibly qualified for this with over 20 years of experience in this field. I have a degree in economics, and I took a $20,000 investment in Ginger Peach and turned it into one of the state's top bakeries. So today, I am very pleased to be here. I am here to answer any questions that you may have. I'm very, very excited. It feels like I'm finally checking something off of the list that has taken far too long, but here we are. Is there any questions that I can answer for anyone?
So before my colleagues begin, because I'm sure they're ready to go, um, I just want to thank you for this presentation and for saying yes to the City of Trenton to want to come here. Glad that we're able to hear what it is that you're presenting because at first for me, it was kind of like, they there, they here, why are we doing this? I'm also an educator at Trenton Central High School. I'm the teacher leader, actually, within the restaurant and business community at the high school. And we have culinary, which falls within that small learning community. So as you talk about educating and partnerships and things of that nature, my ears perk up. I'm also an adjunct teacher at Mercer County, um, as well, Professor. So, um, anything dealing with the, the kids and everything definitely sparks my interest and my desire because, um, you know, our kids take an interest in that as well. So I'm excited for what's to come. I thank you for coming forward with us and again, saying yes to Trenton. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Um, first I just want to say, um, congratulations on all of your success. Uh, from what I've heard ever since the rumors started that you're becoming a Trenton, uh, everyone has had magnificent things to say and they can't wait to try, uh, your baked goods. Uh, so I do just have a couple, uh, questions. Uh, could you tell me like how you actually came up with the name, because it's a very cool name?
Rojo's or the Ginger Peach?
Actually, the Ginger Peach.
Okay, so... I'm a child of food stamps. My dad, um, my dad had polio. He had caught polio before the vaccine came out and debilitated his arms. My mother was a high school teacher. What we know about teachers, they're definitely not paid what they need to be paid. I'm one of five children, and I grew up in a multi-generational household, and things were always tough. My grandmother is from Georgia, she's a peach. And my first exposure to baking was through my grandmother. And you can imagine that when you grow up in a household where there's not a lot of money, if any, kids are told, no, a lot, can I have that? No. Can I have that? No, don't touch that, don't sit there, right, you get it? Um, my grandmother had this beautiful, just beautiful southern soft approach. And I, when I used to bake with her, she would let me bake whatever I could ever wanted out of a cookbook. And I would say, can we make this? And we never had the ingredients on hand to actually make those things, nor could we buy them. And she would say, oh, don't worry, darling, we'll just ginger it up. And that was her way of saying, work with what you have to make what you want. And the entire mission statement and ideology behind Ginger Peach is, what are the resources that we have now to turn the same flour, sugar, and cream into different things? I could buy leech now if I wanted to, but how does that support our local farmers? Working with what New Jersey provides and what is accessible to us is important, and that's why it's called the Ginger Peach.
Thank you. It's a wonderful story. Um, just a couple more questions.
Of course.
So regarding, it's for the location.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Just for the needs of the location and transportation. So I, I used to be on zoning boards, so that's where this has come from. Uh, do you need any additional changes to, uh, maybe access for pickups, deliveries, and so forth for the, what the business is going to be getting into there?
Obviously, one of the really cool things is that we have strategic partners in place that are willing to jump through hoops to get us what we need. Um, all the egrets are perfectly sized for what we need to do, and all of our deliveries arrive between 3:00 AM and 5:00 AM in the morning, which means you will never see them, most people will never see them. We do our work at night. So what that allows is us to freely move product in and out of our locations without having to worry, are we getting in the way of something, are we blocking traffic? As of right now, we haven't identified any issues that would prevent us from being able to operate within the existing spaces.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Of course.
And then, um, my final question is, I love what you, your, everything you said, just phenomenal. But, yeah, you have it so clearly identified the idea that we do not have many jobs here. People can simply walk to. And it just brings me back to even, you know, the painting that's behind us, the old Roebling factories and the steel. People with witches walk to their job. And it's just something unfortunately, uh, we're not back to yet. Hopefully, we'll be soon with businesses such as yours. Do you have a estimate of how many employees you might be able to hire?
26. 26. That is opening staff. If I do my job right, 50, when all is said and done. Majority of them full-time positions, if people want them. We run a flex schedule. We understand that people's lives are complicated, they involve a lot of pieces and moving parts, and we believe in scheduling our employees around their existing lives. So while we may say we want to bring in 20 full-time, 6 part-time, we may meet 40 amazing part-time candidates, and we're just like, well, that's what it's going to be. But 26 is our projected opening team. Not counting the team of Ginger Peach who will be here for training and support. Oh, and our goal is also to hire 80% of those people from the Trenton zip code. Hopefully. I hope people want jobs. Please tell people to come get jobs, I mean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it, Ms. Councilwoman.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Brown, yes. So I love your passion, I love your positive energy that you talk. You're, it comes through with joy. I love that you want to make sure that I, it moved me when you said, I said so many of the individuals were coming from Trenton and they couldn't get there. So I was, it, it's important to me that you were paying attention to that and that you knew that it was a good, uh, business decision to come and invest here in our city. I am grateful, um, that we are going, that you're going to help with our economy because Trenton is, is actually in a, an incredible position right now, and we are moving so many things forward, and our economy is certainly on the rise, and you're going to be a major part of that. And I know that because my husband is going to be a major part of your business. Um, he knows that there's a certain hour of the day that if he does not get there at a certain time, he is not going to get those nice soft little, uh, buns that you have, you make. And you only make them once during the day, once they're gone, they're gone. And he knows that, he tells me that. So, um, uh, Mayor, they didn't, they don't have to go rushing, he can come right here. Invite him over here, once you get this up and running. Um, I love that you're, you're the, what you call what your experience, the 20 years plus, um, that you're not starting from scratch, it's something that you know, and it reaches, we know that all it does, it'll be done right and it done in excellence. Um, and I'm glad that you say that you want to make sure that, um, you're paying attention to this Trenton zip code when it comes to hiring. That is very important to me, that our residents know that they are going to get priority, that they are, this is being done with them in mind, that we're not putting, inserting something and then outsiders benefit from it, but actually our, um, city will, um, benefit from it. So I just want to thank you. I don't have any questions, I just want to say, and also I wanted to acknowledge what you did say about, um, giving back. Because a lot of times, a lot of businesses, the large businesses, it's difficult to get them to give back. Although I will say, this Starbucks under the previous, um, management, they were amazing. Uh, the young woman Stephanie was here, she did amazing in our community. And it shifted once she, um, passed. But I'm excited about what you're going to do, but you absolutely were speaking truth to power that, that most organizations, you got to write a letter to them, they've got to get information for, get it to their corporate office, and their corporate office has to see what's not their worthy. And it's, it's that crazy domino effect, there's a whole bunch of red tape.
Yes, so.
Thank you for acknowledging that, and I, I know that you're going to give back to the community, and I just look forward to having you here.
I appreciate that. And in response, part of the reason why the giving back component is a core of our business is, ooh, this, this community literally made me. I'm a James Beard fellow, the odds of that are slim to none. One in 20 women in this country are chosen a year for this to happen, and it's because my community pushed me into the spotlight. You are not allowed to ride to the top floor without sending the elevator back down.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Madam President, we have another presentation on our agenda this evening, and that is, I hope I say this correctly, this is Archer Law Firm, Julia Fall and Gil Seaton, did I say that right?
Yes, and I'm, Archer Public Affairs, not the law firm.
I'm sorry?
Archer Public Affairs, not the law firm.
Archer Public Affairs, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll correct that.
Okay. Uh, I'm, my name's Julia Fall, I'm also here with Jeff Redo, who's, uh, representing Gil Seaton, who's joining us via, uh, video conference. He's in California, and we appreciate you guys giving us a little bit of time. Um, I'll give you some brief background on the, uh, project. Uh, we began talking to council last December, um, on for the Rowan Towers redevelopment project. Uh, we were able to, uh, may get a $10 million GRRP award from the federal government through the housing and urban development. Um, that fund is necess, we, we only get that $10 million award upon financing. So the Rowan Towers property is working through, uh, the HMFA process as well as the Aspire, uh, process, and also seeking, uh, pilot extension and a new pilot, uh, upon completion, upon completion of that other... that other financing. So we came last December to talk to the counsel about this redevelopment project. We've heard specifically about some other concerns, so we redeveloped our project to address council needs. We then met with the Council Subcommittee on Housing as well as several times with the city's, the city's housing team. We also worked directly with DCA to acquire a waiver to be allowed on to, for this pilot to be considered. And we've been taking feedback sort of over the course of the last year to try and develop this into a project that was really worthwhile. So the goal for today would be to move the pilot approval process forward and then at our next meeting, we'll also be looking to have a pilot extension on the pilot that currently exists for that project. I'll have Jeff Rendell join us to talk a little bit about the details of the redevelopment. And Gil is here to answer any questions that you guys have. And obviously, we're open to any comments.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council, members of the community. We have a little bit of time tonight and mostly here to answer your questions. Familiar with the property. It's going to be rehabilitation. It's going to include redevelopment plumbing system, different types of updating, fire and life safety, emergency generator systems, HVAC, all things that you would consider. Really, the most important thing in my mind is to address any questions that you might have about the project going forward. And most importantly, Gil Seton is available here via Zoom to answer any questions that you might have specifically about the project.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions at this time? Any comments at this time? Anything? Counselwoman Prisman.
So yes, one, thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for the presentation and the update because you were here last year, as I do remember. And I, I'm encouraged by this project because this community, they were needed. This is a long hour. There are many seniors, many seniors that occupy this building and having the rehabilitation be that especially HVAC, that's dealing with your health straight on. The elevators, the, let, all that, all that news and updates. So thank you for that. My question is, how are you planning on doing the rehabilitation? Are you going to start from the top? How are you going, how will the residents be impacted by it? How have you figured out that portion?
Sure. And that's probably a question that's best suited for Gil, who is on the screen. Gil, are you there?
I'm here. Can you see me if, maybe?
Can't see, but we can definitely hear you.
Okay, so, thank, okay. Thanks for your consideration today. The renovation, it's a major, major renovation of the property. The plumbing system will be completely replaced. As a result, the way that the renovation will proceed will be by plumbing stack. And so, because the water will need to be turned off for each plumbing stack in the building while those pipes are tied into the units. And so the plan is, we have a certain amount of natural vacancy and we're letting, and rather than refilling units, we're allowing them to build. And then we will have plumbing stacks that are vacant. You know, say, for example, if we had five plumbing stacks, plumbing stack number one would be vacant first. And then we would renovate that stock entirely with no one in the unit. And then, once those were renovated, we would take people and, for example, the second plumbing stack and move them to the first stack, which is now renovated. And now we would have the second stack vacant and we'd renovate that and we'd move through the building like that. So does that, does that answer your question?
That does. Thank you very much, Gil, for that. And I don't know, I was trying to look up the, the actual front because it was the other, the, the front of that building, the, the grounds of the front of it. Are we doing anything with the outside of that to do that work, green space for that, to give the residents more?
We have the allowance to, to upgrade the exterior space. At this point, with respect to this, what I would call the soft scape, the greenscape, we don't have a specific landing picked out, but we do have the intention of resurfacing the basketball court there as well as putting in new basketball, uh, board and rim and net as well as kind of upgrading the rest of the area that exists there. We're also adding a transit stop because there's a bus stop right in front of the property. So with a bench and a covered area so that residents have a covered place to sit and wait for our transit. So that, that's the, the intention there.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other council members with any questions or comments? Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time and attention, hospitality.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President, at this time, I believe we've reached public comment. If we could have the public comment clipboard, please. And to the public, public comment, Madam President, we have eight individuals listed for public comment. Public comment will be.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, five minutes for each individual. You may address any item that you wish. Please know the council is not obligated to respond. First person listed is Karan Reen.
Mr. Garcia, did you mark Councilwoman Harrison as present?
I did. I have a six oh five. Thank you.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I just had a very.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, yes. So I'm Karan Reen and my address is 247 Church Street. So I just had a quick clarification, or want to click a quick clarification on the resolution two twenty-four dash four four four, which is designating the City of Trenton County of Herser as in need of rehabilitation. So I just wanted to clarify and see if this is making the entire city a redevelopment area. Because I know a bunch of business owners that love to open up businesses throughout the city, but because they're not in a redevelopment area, they're not able to. Or it would be a lot easier. So I just wanted to make a quick clarification, see if this resolution was that and yourself. And how long would it take to be approved? Thank you.
Eleanor Lake.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eleanor Lake. I'm from the US Virgin Islands and I've been treated very badly in Trenton. I work for the longest I've been here, I've been working. And I think that as an elder woman, I should be treated in the way that I'm treated. So now I'll tell you about what it is. I live on 221 Spring Street, Trenton, New Jersey. My home is, the roof is coming off. The man that I talked to, um, eyes about helping me, and he told me, he said, to go and call, um, Recreation in City Hall. I come and he told me to come down there. When I reached there, the man by the name of Moses, he was very nice. I thought he was a preacher. I said to him, here I am. I slipped on, honestly, told me that I should come down here for help if I'm in here. Moses returned, told me, he said, I got, we got the money. Now look to us, I tell you, and read what he can see. He sent me to the bank about three times, three times for the same information in a blazing sun. This time it's about a hundred degrees. This is in the summertime when it's blazing hot. I have high blood pressure. I can't drive, so I come down here near my husband and my little grandbaby, catching cats with the money I don't have. Okay? When I reached up here, I gave him the papers that he sent before. I'm intern now, he tells me I want to fill them out and then when you done, bring them back. Come back down here and I brought the papers back to the man, okay? When I gave them to him, I didn't hear nothing from him anymore, nothing at all. So I come down here and I'm up and I'm looking for him. When I run into him, I said, why didn't you call me to let me know what's going on? He said, didn't you get a letter? I said, a letter from who and why? I hope you all understand and tell me. And if you don't, please let me know and I'll say what I have to say again. He said to me, bring the, um, that fill out the papers. And when I bring that to him, he, after that, he said, he gets a letter from his boss and if the job that is needed, it's not really of any use, it just can be. I said, how could it, if it's such far deal, why don't you wait till it come up, wait till you to do it? He talk him, he turn up and he say, I'll be back. He said, just wait. When I come back, he tell me that it's not mine. Then he recommended to a man by the name of Margaret and he was supposed to take over his, his part. Well, he told me that he is in, um, Moses tell him what's going on and it was so long. The whole thing is make a long story short, load it up and running up and down, getting people to come and take, see what's going on with the roof and how much it would cost, okay? I didn't get no word from them. I got me up on that, on Holden Avenue, along South Trent, looking for these big enough fixtures. And when I get them, everyone told me that the roof is almost falling in because one side of the roof, the squirrel that was eating it out. And you could stay in the bed sometime, it frightened me, I think somebody broke in the house, they're having a party upstairs. Well, nobody, everybody that I recommend, nobody has shown up because nobody's calling. Moses wait until the turn of the day, all the time I was coming down here. But I got sick, come back and I put my toe without a razor and it had me down. So today, I'm heading, heading and I come down here just to see because I hear if you got a problem and it's not solved, come down here. And I hope somebody is hearing me and will feel sorry for me. I'm eighty years old. I've paid my dues to work in Trenton, New Jersey. I'm from the US Virgin Islands and I have rights to be in America just to see. I have the same sign, the same president and I have the rules that I live on here, which I live over here. We just are following, that's all. But if that's understanding, I can repeat myself, okay? So, Mr. Garcia, it's not like I can't pay you because I can't return today.
Ma'am, I believe that is your time.
Eleanor.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Excuse me. Miss Lake, this is your time. That is your time. Your time, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, ma'am.
Security, if necessary, if needed, ma'am. That is your time.
I'll ask that I tell you that I'm here for my duties because nobody wants to hear what I'm here for.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. That's enough. That is your time.
All right. You win. My husband tells me not to talk because I don't.
Marlene Dublinsky.
Honorable Captain, members, and congratulations to those related. My name is Marlene Dublinsky. I live at 215 East Front Street. I have never been so nervous to speak publicly. I came to Trenton after a very good career and I lived a year in the mission. I know a lot of people on the streets here that are homeless, that are desperate, that have various, various circumstances and situations. I used to go to Camden in 2015 and when I would come off the train, they would offer me everything under the sun. People were there, no offense, please don't take me wrong, because I've worked twenty years as an addiction therapist, ten years as a psychiatric physician assistant. And you would see people just out of it, just out of it, on drugs and people selling drugs. My birthday was Saturday. I went Saturday and took the Riverline and I took the bus over to Philadelphia. I did not see anything happening there. It was quiet. They moved the methadone clinic. I've heard council members say before that we learn from other cities. I'm not a civil engineer. I'm not an expert on anything. We learn from other cities. They moved the methadone clinic and they cleaned that whole area. I would like to respectfully submit to you that they said they could not move the bus stop at Broadens State by the Crown Chicken to tell who's loitering and who is not. And they moved the bus stop. There was a group, a hate group downtown on Saturdays. I contacted March Wallace at the time by text. I called the police and I called the Anti-Defamation League in New York City. I never saw them there again. One citizen in one city can do something for this. I would like to respectfully submit to you that if we move the methadone clinic on Perry, you would see a lot of the downtown clean up with the loitering. I've noticed that Warren Street, where the state workers go, is going very well. It's growing. I know Joe Festa, the barber there, who owns the property, he's a wonderful man. But I would like to make a suggestion that we could build up our downtown again. The Dollar Store went out, the circuit, the Blue City Blue went out, the Rite Aid went out. We could build up downtown again if we were able to clean up the problem. And I'm not saying just throw the people out and just get rid of the clinic, one, two, three. We need to help people and I believe that. And I know that we can. But if we could move the clinic, it feeds the downtown drug trade. And the reason I know that is when I go to Dunkin' Donuts every so often and I stand on the corner, have a cigarette, I know the people who come down there and what they're doing. I might get killed for saying this, but I know the people. I know what's going on. And I respectfully suggest that we could please do something about cleaning up downtown. And I think the first way to begin is to do something about the clinic. Because you see what's on Perry Street, you see what's on Broad, you see what's on State Street. And I know the people. I know them by name. I know them by their nicknames. I talk to them, they talk to me. We're friendly. But I would want the help and I, I myself have had issues and I do, I am currently in a recovery process. And I would like to see other people be able to do that because it will change their lives. It turns your whole world around when you start to recover and you start to get a better way of life. And it can happen for the people there. But it can also be an opportunity for citizens to again enjoy the downtown because everything closes up on the weekends when the state workers are gone. And it's not fair to the rest of the city, ninety-four thousand residents. I hope I don't sound incorrect. I hope I'm not being disrespectful. I hope my heart's in the right place, I have empathy. I don't want to see people get hurt. I don't want to see people not get the help they need. But I think the clinic, and I was a prescriber, I prescribed, was a prescriber, psychiatric prescriber, Oklahoma, Minnesota, North Dakota, and Pennsylvania, I held medical licenses. And the doctors there are prescribing to these people that are on the methadone, things that could give them an overdose. I don't understand their prescribing methods because I wouldn't have prescribed that way. But that's what I want to propose to you. I maybe I should have spoken first with the councilwoman of the ward, but I wanted to come forward and say, my heart's in the right place. I want to see people get help. I know people that have died, some had cancer, one just told me tonight he has cancer. And I know different people there. If we could move the clinic, let Camden move the clinic, they're about to build a beautiful new Walter Ramp. I saw the rendition on the news. So I don't want to go on much further. I hope I'm being respectful. I'm frightened to death because I never get nervous about speaking. And I want to thank all of you. It's wonderful to see all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keon Jones.
How you doing, counsel?
Good evening.
I'm here because I found out I was on the docket, probably.
Just need your name and address for the record.
I'm here representing TFD. Keon Jones, my name. Like I was saying.
And your address?
I live in Trenton.
We still need your address for reference. Thank you.
I got laid up here on personal business. So I was on the docket for involuntary retirement submitted by a fire director. I just learned that I was permanently disabled and I can no longer do the job. I found out in August and I got a, a letter, probably like a. I found out in August and I got a, a letter probably like, uh, the next month stating that I need to let the fire department know what I'm going to do. The letter was sent to me, but it didn't even tell me how the court respond to him. Shows incompetence, you just want to point that out. Um, I got multiple dis herniated, I got a herniated disc in my back and a broken tendon. Um, this happened, uh, due to a fire truck, I had the shocks. We had a fire truck that's by ocean standard, should have been off the road twenty years ago. And it's a Frankenstein truck. It's a ninety-five combined with a ninety-three. The nineteen ninety-five and nineteen ninety-three truck combined, which is illegal to do. And it shouldn't be in service. I got injured on that truck. Um, and, uh, now I'm forced to retire due to my injuries. And there, the fire director wants to push me for involuntary, uh, retirement. Uh, he was, there was a meeting with the deputy chief. Um, and the union stated that, um, they want to push for me to get a accidental, um, retirement. He's want to push to get me forty percent of my pension, which is unfair. They had a meeting about it. It was supposed to be a, uh, meeting with the, uh, city lawyer. It was a, I was put on charges because I didn't respond to the letter. I didn't know how the court, he didn't give me the direction on how the court respond at all. So now here we are. Um, I'm here to tell you that I do not want to do the involun- this is not an involuntary retirement that I'm seeking. Uh, the unions told him what it was. The deputy chief told him what it was and he impulsively still pushed this forward on the docket. Um, you don't need this type of behavior here in the city. This is a very incompetent league. He doesn't know what he's doing. I'm sorry, I just got to put that up. He doesn't know what he's doing. You, you need to check his background, where he comes from. He's only been a, never been in leadership. Only been a firefighter for six years. I've been on him for twelve years. Y'all kill me in that space. I would put anybody in that space, but he, he needs to go. Um, and that's all, that's all I really got to say tonight. Um, I wasn't prepared to speak. This is, I was sitting down eating dinner with my family. It's, it's the thing. You can't treat people like that. That's it.
Good evening, Good Day State, Division ten, Gardner Avenue. Good evening, Council President and distinguished members. I'm here to congratulate Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Harris, Councilwoman Frisbee, and, uh, and on their reelection. And I want to say something to the marvelous and amazing South Ward Councilwoman Jenna Figaro Kittenberg. Kittenberg, I'm sorry. Keep your head up. You have done outstanding work in the South Ward. Your work has changed the lives of so many in that community. You addressed a lot of issues that went undone for a very, very long time. Your communications in the, um, in the South Ward with the residents through your Facebook and even your one-on-one conversations with residents, it resonates. It really does. And although it looks like it's a very tight and tough battle, you stay on that battlefield. You have a lot of people that are supporting you, staying current. Sometimes you have to just encourage yourself, but I'm encouraging you tonight to go on. I love everything that you're doing. You have exceeded my expectations. You hang in there, Jenny, you hear me? All right. The other thing I want to say is hi to Maria. I've known Maria since the nineties. Uh, when, um, when Trenton first got its, uh, Weed and Seed Award. And she came in and it was just something about it that made her special. Uh, she got right to work and so was so innovative with programs. And I loved her transparency. She's always been like that. And then when she works with her husband to do productions and provide entertainment for the city, it's a win-win. She really, she's all that. And I am so glad to see that she has moved up, uh, through the city and now she holds the position of Business Administrator. She's second to none. She really is. And I just wanted to congratulate you as well. The other thing I want to say was Paul Harris and the Halloween spectacular in Catwater Park. He did his thing. Yeah, I don't know how many of y'all were able to get out there too. I went out there for a little while. The entire park, it was so sensational. Paul Harris, if you're in the room, I just want to say you did an excellent job. And I know you work under, uh, Maria and you got a lot of it from there. But I also know you. And I know that Mr. Harris is very innovative and creative himself and it certainly showed on Halloween night. It was a night for all ages. All the residents had a wonderful time. So I just wanted to thank him as well. Sometimes y'all don't always get the acknowledgements of the things that you do good. But I like to come and tell you because you know I come on the other side as well. So, tonight, tonight is all good. Um, there's one thing I do want to ask you about. I am still waiting to hear about the senior advisory board that was created. Uh, and I'm hoping that those appointments will be coming soon so that we can get busy. There's a lot of things that the seniors are looking for and there's a lot of students who want to be on it. So please keep your word and get moving, okay? It's almost the end of the year. So, you know, posthese, as they say, okay? All right, I don't have anything else. I'm on my way to, uh, you know, I'm on the Housing Authority and there's a championship game today with the thirteen-year-olds. So I'm going over there to root them off for a little bit. So, God bless you. Take care.
Thank you.
Ooh, it's, looks like Jerry. I don't know the last name. Thank you, sir, because do say so of the microphone.
Uh, excuse me. Good evening, panel. Um, this is new to me. This is my first time participating in a, um, a meeting like this, a committee.
Sir, I'm going to interrupt you. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Right, right, okay. That's all I do then. My name is Jerry.
Thank you.
Tell you the last name.
Thank you.
Uh, a little bit about me real quick. This is my hometown. I was born and raised in Trenton, New Jersey before it is what it came today.
Mr. Drew, I just need your address as well. I'm sorry.
Six thirty West State Street.
Thank you.
Six thirty West State Street.
Thank you.
Apartment seven thirteen. You need anything else? It's a senior citizen apartment and I got issues about that. But there's so much that I'd like to get off my chest. I can't do it all in five minutes. So hopefully I can come back another time to get some other stuff off my chest. Um, okay, the first thing, like I said, I was born and raised in Trenton, New Jersey before it came today. I lived on number nine Water Street before the Jefferson complex was built. I moved out of here and my father took us out of Hamilton Township and grew up. I've been around a few places and I'm back here in Trenton. And I'm ashamed of the world that is today. I'm ashamed of it. George Washington, seventy or seventy-six, did the, from the Constitution so we can have freedom from the other countries, France or whatever. But anyway, I'm proud of this city. And the way it is today, I'm not proud of it because just think of the tourism that come here to make our economy more. That's one thing. That's on me. That's my thought. Okay, that's the end of that. The next thing is, is like, our heritage and, um, West State Street. It should be a bus shelter for us, to shelter us from the rain and the snow. I drive a lot. Sometimes I have to take bus transportation. I'm saying, well, these people can put a makeshift bus, sit down to catch the bus in the rain and snow. What's up with that? What is the city trying to make it safe for us to move around? They got them downtown, here and there they got them. But it's supposed to, to me, it's need to be used down here where the senior citizens have to come out and don't have transportation or whatever. Even people who live in the neighborhood come out, catch public transportation. They gotta stand out in the rain. Hmm, okay. Uh, the other thing is, I would like to speak about this West State Street. This is the Capitol. I gotta go like this up and down West State Street and Mr. Doc, the folks, carrying my car up. And then the police see me driving. Oh, he's drunk. Okay, that's the end of that. Safety for our children in the neighborhoods. A few times I went to Calhoun Park, saw a, um, our children in our neighborhood was playing baseball. And then I see the other kids come out playing baseball. They all got the same uniform for it. Our children is like, okay. And then we gotta go around and stand out on the street, babe, on the corner. You got a lot of stores in Trenton that go days. I have no prejudices that they have. But what if they give them back to the neighborhood? Can I go to this, but they can say, hey, look, we got a sponsor. Can you sponsor our baseball team and buy us uniforms? So we can look just as professional as the other children that come in? Okay, that's the end of that. That just, my account, what happened to us when I was a kid. We had companies there and we went to play baseball. All of us had uniforms, the same match. We didn't stand up in front of the cars, babe, of rain, which is kind of sad.
Michael, okay, that is your time.
Okay, uh, anyway. I started to comment about.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
The same page.
Excuse me, sir. That's your time. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Feedback is to.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Phil Dan Pearson.
Thank you.
Phil Dan Pearson. Is she present?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, gotcha.
Hello, City Council. My name is Faith Ann Pearson. I live in eighty-three Clark Avenue. I have three things to mention. Number one, congratulations to you and I'm sorry this half court has to have one. Second, I am thrilled that the state is working with the city to get the rubble strips for Mulberry to help slow down the traffic. And last but not least is the Trenton garbage man. I have no pet any gripes other than the fact that some of these one gentleman came and took the garbage and he went and grabbed by recycle can. I told him that's recycling. He didn't know what recycling was. He took the recycle can and threw it in with the garbage. Now, are we supposed to be recycling? Okay, my garbage can is not bright yellow. It's green, original. It has the seal on the side for Mercer County. This needs to be addressed because perhaps so many that aren't putting garbage out, some of them are putting their recycling in the garbage in plastic bags, tiny. And I'm trying to make the earth that much better. I'm a Native American. My grandmother on my mother's side was a full pipe with Coca-Cola soup. My mother was born in nineteen oh two. She had me in fifty-eight, when she was fifty-six years old. I shouldn't be here today, but I am. And I made it to sixty-six and I turned sixty-seven in January. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Is this Carmen Ramos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman. My name is Carmen Ramos and I'm resident and owner of the House, eleven thirty eighth Genesis Street. I came here now because this morning I came to Mr. Anthony Santora's office. Uh, I have, um, to follow up about the repair, this sidewalk. Two years ago, they cut the tree, but the sidewalk getting worse and worse and worse and worse. And in February, August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, I emailed to him. And he responded to me, this is on the list for repair. I was on picture. The contractor, the contractor is currently working in the eastward and will be moving to the southward next. August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. I came this morning. I have a lot issue with my family, taking care of my family. And, um, I wanted to see, they told me this morning that it's no money, no money to repair the sidewalk. Eleven thirty eighth Genesis Street. I'm here for twenty-three years. I've paid taxes, twenty-three years paid taxes. And I request only something that the city is going to fix it. And they say that it's no money to repair that hatch for the city. Thank you.
Madam President, that is all the individuals I have for public comment this time. If it's your wish, you can start with any member of council for civic comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Everett.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first I want to start by congratulating my council colleagues on their reelection and, and wishing our VP good luck in her run for her reelection as well. Um, I want to bring urgency to the fact that New Jersey is in a stage three alert that we are not supposed to be lighting fires, uh, with wood or charcoal because the embers can start little wildfires in our leaves and things like that. So I want to also renotice that, uh, I saw yesterday, you cannot light fireworks right now either. So there has been small wildfires throughout the state that our various fire departments have been putting out because of the lack of precipitation. We have not been getting rain in about a month. And they're in all over New Jersey and they've been battling fires. So I just want everyone to consider this nice weather we're having. You know, we have a habit of lighting fire pits and things and hanging on the backyard. I love a good backyard hangout with a fire pit. And I found this out from my neighbor when I told her that I was going to have a little mother-daughter thing at my house and like the fire pit. And I was disappointed when I found out, but I definitely understand. So, um, I also want to say on that note as well, for people who smoke, um, while I do not encourage you to litter, but people do have a habit of throwing their butts on the ground when you're done smoking, please make sure you put them out, whether you're throwing it on the ground or disposing it in proper, um, receptacles. Be mindful that it's not lit and that you don't start a fire. Um, I want to, I don't really have a whole lot to comment on today, but I did want to comment on, um, Mr. Keon Jones's situation about the involuntary retirement. I don't know a whole lot about the situation, but I'm hoping that, you know, um, this is something that the administration and, and Mr. Jones can discuss and negotiate and come to some kind of agreement on or settlement on. Um, so I would be in favor of seeing that happen tonight. Um, and maybe put a pause on moving forward with this, uh, resolution or, I believe it's a resolution. So, um, that's all that I have. And I just want to thank everyone for coming out and exercising your civic duties and thank you. You know, the first time is very intimidating. So I appreciate you being involved in local government and expressing your opinions. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. I'm sorry, B. Abrams, you said? You had something you want to say?
Just that, um, I'm sure.
Turn the light back.
Don't need to be careful with the comments with litigations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you. Councilwoman Williams will have to ask back and forth tonight. Councilwoman Williams. Oh, she's not here. Okay. Count.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yeah, it's gonna be one of those evenings. Yeah, I know it's gonna be one of, yeah. Um, first I would like to say, sorry I was not here. Maria, uh, vote for you. You're, you're all, you're not, you're one of the hardest working employees this city's ever had. So, um, I know you do a phenomenal job, as you always do and you always have done. Secondly, I would like to say, we just had the mini pitch, the upgrade at Union Park. Maria Richardson and, uh, Paul Harris, Mayor Vasur, Nancy Cozy Cabrera and the Team America. It's got like four hundred fifty kids now. It's doing an awesome job. Um, I'd like to thank Team, uh, Trenton United Family Foundation. They did a community cleanup in Wilbur section, you know, Euclid, Tioga, uh, Walnut. We're out there cleaning up, it was awesome. Um, then I want to talk about, what about the docket tonight? Um, three things on the docket. Uh, twenty-four, four, four, five, brand choice voting. Um, the voting system that we have now has allowed the best person to win. It's been working for hundreds of years. I don't think we need to change it. Three of us on this city council have actually won a runoff. And I don't think we'd actually be on here if it wasn't for the runoff. Twenty-four dash zero seven four, city council treaty. Uh, I think it's a great idea. It'd be a better ideal if the DCA was paying for it. So, that's my recommendation. Maybe we could use the DCA to pay for that because like you said, uh, it's minimum is twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, eight hours, if you got more, maybe the DCA will pick it up. Uh, twenty-four dash zero seven five, going from the Tuesday and Thursday meetings, um, actually not really for this. Uh, I think we, you know, going down to just Tuesday night meetings. And I understand my colleagues' points that, uh, you know, consolidating the meetings. But my, my, my take on it was regarding the public. I think the public, giving the public an extra day to speak, uh, to come up here, uh, would be great for them. And, uh, having meetings Tuesdays, Thursdays, but that's based upon my colleagues and how they choose to vote. And I'd also like to thank all my colleagues up here who ran for reelection. They work hard. I'd like to thank the eastward residents, uh, for everyone who came out and supported me. And, um, to all of my, my friends and, and, and people who helped me get the place I am right now. So thank everybody and let's keep moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Good evening, big councilwoman, president. So I wanted to say, first one to start off with congratulating, um, Councilwoman Harrison on his reelection. Councilwoman Williams as well, and, uh, we wish the best to Councilwoman, uh, Jennifer, Jennifer Figueroa Kenber, um, on her, uh, race. Uh, the next thing I wanted to do was talk about the rank choice voting that's going to be coming up. Um, I just wanted to say that is something that I did bring to the table. I felt that is something that we, uh, would help us with money, uh, that city. More, every time we have a runoff, it means we're going to incur more money. We have to have the clerk's office, we have to have our, our county, um, our city office. We have to have the candidates spending more money. So it is all about if you, however the city, the community decides that they want, um, to rank their preference for winners in whatever election it is so that we don't not have to continuously have runoffs. So, um, I actually just considered that as really, um, a time saver, it is a money saver and allows the city to come out and not have to keep on like we're going to be in holiday season's coming again. And we have, they're going to come out and again, as we shift, so two years ago, the numbers go down, down, down. The people get tired with, um, having to come out and vote again and again. Um, next I wanted to just, uh, reiterate, as I've been talking with the director. Hmm, it's not over there right now, but there was a free rabies clinic. Um, we just had one on November second. The next one is going to be on November sixteenth. This is for cats. So if you have cats, this is free, F R E E, free. It is going to be at the Trenton Animal Shelter, seventy-two Esher Street, from ten a.m. to one p.m. So please bring your cat out if they need to have their rabies, um, shot done. Also, I wanted to say thank you to everyone, um, in the west ward who did vote for me. Um, and even though it's difficult for me, because I will still represent you to the best of my ability. And we've gotten a lot done in the west ward over the last almost two years. And there's still so much work to be done, but I'm grateful for another opportunity to continue the work that I started. I might also want to piggyback on Councilwoman Edwards. Um, yes, we are in a state where they're asking everyone to be very cautious. We have not had rain in a very long time, so fire, uh, fire, uh, issues can flare up at any given time. So we ask everybody to be very mindful of that, especially with it's going to be getting late soon. I mean, I'm cold soon and folks are going to want to light their chimneys. I ask you to be very cautious with that. Um, and then I wanted to say congratulations, big shout out to Paul Harris on his first major event at the city of Trenton with the Halloween Trumpet Tree. Absolutely phenomenal, phenomenal job. We had at least three different states that I know, um, there, Trenton, we had New Jersey, we had P K, and we had Delaware. All, um, present. So that was absolutely major. It was more like a festival than it was more a trumpet tree. You did an absolutely commendable job. You, your team, our amazing fire department and our, uh, police department did an outstanding job. And kudos to our mayor. Uh, I wanted to just say all of that, I thought you said a great job. And of course, um, that wouldn't have happened without your amazing team. So the recreation department, I commend them as well and everyone for being out. It was great seeing all of the directors out there. And, um, just the, the spirit of Trenton just resonated so beautifully with everybody. And when I just coming out, I was just, they didn't have any incidents at all, so fun time. Um, with that, I think I am actually done. So I'm going to read a portion of the city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank you and I thank everybody for being out here on this evening and I wish you a safe evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much, Council President. Uh, just first I want to, um, I got several things to talk about, try to be as brief as possible. I want to thank and congratulate, uh, City Clerk Brandon Garcia and the Clerk Department for a job well done administering and conducting this past election on Tuesday alongside the Mercer County Clerk's Office. It's a great endeavor. Uh, I know it's a lot of moving parts, but I just want to say bravo. Also, uh, November twentieth, five thirty, uh, Wednesday night, five at Galley Baptist Church, four forty, Martin Luther King Boulevard, we're going to be having our next North Ward Citizens Police Advisory Council meeting. Uh, we'd love to have as many residents, uh, business owners, whoever, come. You can, uh, you don't necessarily have to be in a North Ward as I found out, uh, but for people who come to the meeting, it's a great conversation with our police department, particularly, uh, often we're blessed to have Director Steve Wilson with us as well as our detective for the North Ward, Corin McNair. Um, so please come and join us. Um, I also want to make a request that, uh, I know we have Rowan Towers tonight for a pilot, uh, which, uh, I am supportive of. But I wanted to ask that Brunswick Village come back. I've asked about this previously because, uh, we also had a pilot discussion with them, offered that to them. Uh, but we have had to come back to council for a presentation on the renovations since, uh, March of twenty twenty-three, uh, based on my emails I went through to make sure of that. And we really need to make sure that happens because a lot was promised. Uh, as far as I can tell, renovations are not occurring. If they have, they're very minimal. So I would like to request that, uh, we have a presentation from the developers and owners of our properties soon. Uh, regarding the rank choice voting, I appreciate, uh, my council colleague, uh, Frisbee's interest and, uh, bringing us forth. Uh, but I, uh, would not be able to support it myself. As I do believe, um, as much as we need to save money, elections are more than about money. Um, we need to make sure the Trentonians particularly that we no longer have may municipal elections have a real, and a real way to vet candidates, figure out who's who, uh, whom I represent them best, who wants to do the work, uh, by being out there and making sure that they're part of the community. And that's something, whether we have a runoff especially, uh, when you have to work as a candidate, uh, a second time, and I had to do that myself, you really have a chance, actually as a candidate, to meet more voters and find out what they want, not what you want to do, find out what they want. And I really think it's important, uh, that we maintain the system we have. But also, one of the things that's really come to light, uh, this past year is making sure we have more voter locations, uh, near the neighborhoods where our constituents live. Uh, there's been an effort statewide, uh, in agreement with the county to consolidate, regionalize voting locations, which, uh, isn't fair to our residents, particularly our seniors, uh, folks who do not have a car. As was mentioned earlier about, uh, this great business company in Trenton. We need to have people be able to do things where they live and making, uh, folks such as Kingsbury, uh, at one point was going, all the folks at Kingsbury were going to have to walk up to Pure Arena, which is a good walk, a dangerous walk in some ways. Uh, but because of the efforts of Assemblywoman Lena Reynolds Jackson, myself and others, uh, we were able to thankfully convince the county, uh, and also, uh, Mr. Garcia, who was very helpful with this, to, uh, have a compromise and have the voting station located at Luther Arms Apartments, which made it more fair for the residents, nearly a thousand by Kingsbury. And that should never happen again. Trenton should be consulted, uh, much better than it's been previously where people will have an opportunity to vote. Uh, finally, uh, just want to add positive, uh, and that is the Trenton High Football Team. If you haven't heard, they finished over five hundred for the first time since twenty seventeen. And I want to share a new West Jersey football league. I think that's what it's called, Valley Division Championship. So, uh, great job by our football team. Uh, hopefully, uh, you'll, we'll see some of you at the basketball, uh, team, uh, games this year. Uh, they're very excited, both the boys and the girls. And actually, my last point is that I just want to, um, thank my colleagues, Councilwoman Edwards and Councilwoman Frisbee speaking upon us regarding the drought. There's an article today, NJ dot com, that it's actually the broken record, uh, the thirty days of no precipitation beyond like a mist. They said, so we do need help, um, if we can get as many Trentonians as possible to water the trees in front of their houses. Many of our trees are distressed and without water, we're going to have bigger problems coming next year. Thank you. God bless everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. I am short in suite this evening. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being present. Um, thank you to those who presented, uh, before us today. Um, thank you to, um, the, uh, Mr. Brown with bringing your business here to the city of Trenton. It's always a blessing when we get more businesses coming into the city. So I want to say thank you for choosing Trenton and for giving back to our youth in, um, your internship and allowing them and teaching them what to do. Um, me as a special, uh, needs educator, I have a life skills class and I teach my kids a lot of culinary stuff too, without the equipment. So I know it's, it's extremely difficult and so I just want to say thank you, um, for being a person like that in our community. Um, to the city of Trenton, the fire department, the recreation department and the police department. Everyone spoke so highly of the Halloween event. They were all, uh, the fall festival. It was really, really fun for every, just to be walking back to the car and hear so many positive comments from the residents as they were leaving and, um, leaving the event. So I just want to say thank you for that. Um, as far as, uh, the rank choice voting, I am in between that, that, um, I do not want to see anyone runoff. So any way that we can avoid that, it takes a lot of effort. And I think if the people chose the first time, I think it should be what it is. Um, as far as, uh, the sidewalk, I believe they spoke to Ms. Rainbow, so I'm hoping that that will be addressed for her. Um, because it does bother me that someone will tell her that there's no money. And I know for a fact that there was an employee who just said we had plenty of money to fix some sidewalks to another resident. So there's a lot of miscommunication going on within our residents in regards to actual sidewalks. Um, what else do I have? As far as Mr. Jones, I believe I, uh, would like to see, um, some type of resolution for that and would like to see that tabled until that is resolved. Uh, also, that's wrong. Just one more comment. I just want to shout out the Trenton Central High School cheerleading team who are competing and I want to wish them the best of luck. As everyone knows, they are my babies and, um, wishing them the best of luck this weekend. Other than that, I think that is all I have for everyone. Thank you for your comments and being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council vice president, Figueroa Kenber.
Good evening, everybody. Um, a couple of quick things I just wanted to discuss. Um, Ms. Rainbow, I did go outside to speak to you briefly. I didn't know about the situation in front of your home, eleven thirty-eight Genesee Street. You did go through the proper channels, speaking to Mr. Santoro in the proper department. Uh, I wish more residents actually knew the proper channels to go to. So who's you for doing that? Uh, I do hope and implore you to reach out to your councilwoman or any of the council people. Um, in the future, if you are getting that no response or that stagnant response, because there are other steps that we could try to take or try to put you on the radar to get things done. I am happy that there is a resolution on the table tonight that we will be discussing for money, for sidewalk repairs. Um, and I'm hoping that, you know, when it goes over and we are able to pass it and we can add that to the list to get repaired as quickly as possible. There's so many sidewalks in, in, in Trenton in general, um, that have been torn up just by the trees that were planted decades ago, um, slate sidewalks and other, um, and I do know that we haven't been able to get a lot of the sidewalks fixed, but we have gotten, you know, just for instance, in the southward twenty-three streets repaved and other things and other trees taken down and things like that. So we are trying to work to get these things done and I do hope that we'll be able to get that done quickly. I did report another, um, sidewalk in the southward today, five oh four Larriton Street. Same thing, it's added to the list. Another one on Genesee Street, a little further down from where you're at, same thing. So I do hope that it will get done as quickly as possible. And in the future, um, please reach out to me if you need to or, or other council members. Um, Karan, you mentioned the, the rehabilitation of the entire city. Um, I do, um, anticipate getting responses and answers from our administration tonight about that because I have questions as well. Um, I am for that. I think from what I know, from what I've researched, from the information that's been provided to me, um, because I have been, um, at crossroads with, you know, getting people to be able to purchase lots, empty lots that are stagnant, that, you know, do nothing for the city and we're not collecting taxes or revenue on and people are being really, are being faced with, um, it's, it's very problematic for them to be able to get these properties and it should not be. So I am for that. I just want to make sure that it's fair across the board and that it, um, leads to the, the further redevelopment and rehabilitation that the city needs. So thank you for asking that question. I do look forward to getting answers from our administration about that this evening. Um, with, with regards to rank choice voting, I did already voice my opinion about this when it was first, um, brought before the council. Um, with me making phone calls on election night and prior to election night, but primarily on election night and people who had already voted, they already had issues with the concept of voting and what that means and how to do it. And when I asked people, had they voted already, a lot of them said, yeah, I voted right down column A, they were Democrat, or I voted right down column B. And they didn't even understand the, the partisan versus nonpartisan aspect and that the council race was at the bottom of the ballot and that that's nonpartisan and, you know, the first name, the second name, the third name had nothing to do with partisan politics whatsoever. So that in itself is confusing. So to be asking our people to now say, rank who you want by choice, by your favorite or who's going to do the job best or who's in your heart or who's your friend or whatever. One, that is not choosing the right person for the position in my mind. And two, it just makes things so much more confusing. And I think that it is in light, uh, uh, the form of giving a participation trophy or kind of just saying, you know, job well done or just, it's, it's, it's a way of not choosing the best person for the position. I really don't think that we're prepared for that here in the city of Trenton. Um, so I do hope that the discussion goes well and I'm always open-minded. I didn't want to talk about the election, but I'm just, enough people brought it up. I do want to congratulate my colleagues. Congratulations to all you and, um, getting your seats back. Um, and I do hope to continue to be able to work with all of you as we move forward. Um, I want to thank Cordelia's statement for her kind words. And I also want to thank everybody who worked on my campaign and just say, this race is not over. I do hope that people continue to support me, continue to fight. Um, politics is not a game for me. I get tired of hearing politics is a game. It's not a game for me. The more I hear that, the more I cringe. I take, um, all of my constituents very seriously, all of their concerns. And I speak up and I not only talk the talk, but I walk the walk. And I really do hope that constituents see that. So moving forward, um, I hold integrity important in all aspects of life. And I just hope that, you know, we do the right thing moving forward into this election. So I want you guys to have a wonderful night and thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Vice President. Give me one second.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you staying and listening, and we appreciate the comments that were expressed tonight. I just want to say, congratulations once again to Maria, our permanent BA now. Also, congratulations to my council colleagues on their reelection, Councilwoman Frisbee, Councilman Harrison, Councilwoman Williams. Looking forward to working with you all as we continue to move ahead. Council Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg, looking forward to continue to work with you as we move ahead, and wishing you all the very best in your reelection efforts, and then as we push to the runoff that will take place on December the 3rd. My birthday is December the 4th, so, you know, believe me, have me on the front page of the paper. All right, so, what I wanna say, hey, is we are going to discuss this a bit as we move forward into the docket, some of these items and everything, but I do wanna shout out Councilman Harrison, and I thank you, sir, for bringing forward your honest, true, and authentic thoughts, as well as my other council colleagues that did bring it up, and that is what, this is what working together as a council is all about, right? We don't always have to agree on things, but we respectfully talk with each other and work through what it is, so hopefully we can find a happy medium, specifically when it comes to the retreat, right? I do agree DCA should have the funds, and they should take care of us, considering that I had asked for this well before the summer, and we were working on it, and at one point, it was going to be funded by DCA, but then because, because the person from DCA kinda drug his feet a little bit, a lot, it went beyond that time, and then by the time we set down, we visited again, because of the timing, it just didn't work out, and then we had to move it to say, well, November, but then we have the election that's coming up in November, and then that wouldn't be right, because now we're too close to that, so now we look to move it to after the next municipal election. Either way, when we look at the budget, there's a lot of funding that rests for council within the city clerk's budget, so that I've worked it out, we're in the budget decision, we actually started putting some of that money out to truly see what it is that the council uses versus what the city clerk's office uses, right? Because while it is easy paperwork-wise for the city clerk to write things under their account, programmatically, we need to show the difference under the council expenditures, and so we've done that, so there is money that is there, that even if we had to move that money again from the city clerk's budget based on projections and what has happened, we can move that for the retreat over, but I do agree that DCA should meet us where we are with that, because it only strengthens us as a council in doing what it is that we need to do to help this city to be better and to get us to where we need to be. I will speak on the other things when we get into it. When we get into the discussion point further on in the docket. When it comes to the issue of Keon Jones, I'm not sure what the administration is looking to do with that. I will have to recuse myself from that, but I do, I do believe that, listening to everything that was said, I mean, I'm not sure if that's something that can be pulled, left, whatever, but I'm looking forward to hearing what's gonna happen with that as well. That being said, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Appreciate everybody. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President. Moving on with the agenda at this time, I believe we've reached the point we can ask for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports.
Yes, for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports. So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And that brings us to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 24-65, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton, traffic, bus stops, as it applies to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Princeton Avenue, in the city of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing that, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-67, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton, traffic, bus stops, as it applies to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Princeton Avenue, in the city of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing that, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-68, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 77 of the Code of the City of Trenton, fees, tax records. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing that, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-69, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 292, vehicles abandoned of the City Code of the City of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing that, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Yes, we have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
No.
Noted. Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
No.
Noted, Vice, excuse me, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
I believe that motion carries. Ordinance 24-71, an ordinance amending and supplementing the placement of advertising, guide or identification signs, Article 1, Chapter 2, 33 of the City Code of the City of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing that, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to resolutions, Madam President, are there any items at this time that you wish to put up for discussion, or for that matter, extract from a potential consent agenda?
So, I would like to begin to say that I'd like the following pulled for roll call. Vote please, 24-444, because I know people don't want to discuss that and get into it. 24... No. Actually, I wanna pull it for discussion, so we can talk about that, not, we can decide with that, if it can go on consent agenda or not, but 24-445, 24-450, and we have to do the one, we have to take the one out for executive session, right?
Right.
24-474. So, those are mine for discussion, again, I'm sorry, 24-444, 24-445, 24-4... 74 is roll call, that's not discussion. 24-450 is for discussion. Are there any of the council members that have any other resolutions that you would like pulled for discussion, besides what I've noted?
Council President.
Yes.
I agree with you on 24-444, and also...
Besides what I've noted, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam. 24-456.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry, 24-466.
24-4...
66.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison.
Are you gonna roll call these in 24-445 and 24-074, right, and 24-075?
Those are...
Those are orders.
Yeah, what...
Oh, okay, just...
But yes, it will be...
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilwoman Frisbee.
There was just two grammatical errors that needed to be addressed on, one on 445 and the other one 446. You can make a notation, 445, it was in the second to the last paragraph, where it says, third line of, "Transfer all the voters," and it should be "Transfer to the voters."
Okay. Good.
And then on 446, there's a T missing, same thing, I believe it's the word "to," oh, on the back of the front page, it has, where there's a line, "BRs has the skills for the data gathering part of the project, they have no, they have, no, they have not, it should be."
Noted.
Thank you. Council Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
I have a question for 24-461, and 24-458. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So, we'll begin with 24-444, Designating the City of Trenton County of Mercer as an Area in Need of Rehabilitation.
Good evening. My name is Nick Granieri. I am with Millie Givens, we are redevelopment council to the city. We can help to answer some questions about this resolution.
Can you turn up, put the mic up to Woodrow? Sure. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. So, with regard to this resolution, can you briefly explain to us what this means with regard to designating the entire city as an area in need of rehabilitation? Explain just briefly what it is, and then what are the benefits to the residents in the city by doing this, and if there are any cons to doing this?
Sure. So, under the redevelopment law, an area of rehabilitation really allows for the city to, you know, if certain conditions are met, which the study that was done, those conditions are met, so under the redevelopment law, the city is able to be designated for rehabilitation, and it gives the city and council broad powers to work with redevelopers on city-owned properties, abandoned properties. It removes the need for public bidding. As a council, you can work directly with the redeveloper, you can enter into a redevelopment agreement with that redeveloper, and it really gives the city broad powers to work with redevelopers, to bring in those redevelopers you want in the city with regards to abandoned properties, city-owned property, and it's a tool, right? So, there are redevelopment areas within the city of Trenton where, you know, when we talk about pilots, all of that's done within a redevelopment area. The rehabilitation designation just broadens that to really, really all of the properties if they meet the criteria, and it, again, it just gives you power over certain properties so you can, again, bring in the people, the redevelopers who need to get the work done, who you're comfortable working with, and, you know, it really gives you more control so these properties don't end up in foreclosure, and especially for city-owned property, it gives the, you know, it gives the city a leg up in regards to that.
Any comments?
What? Let me just, just more positive again. What I see this doing from a practical standpoint, it allows us to negotiate with a small developer. This is the home, this is the person who wants to become a homeowner, finds a property in a community, and where we can restrict the conditions of the sale. One of the problems we've had in the past is we have now through an auction process where you have outside groups who will come in and they will, through auction process, outbid local people for properties to turn them into rental properties. What this allows us to do is to put a restriction on the redevelopment agreement with the rehab zone, so we can restrict the sale of property for homeownership for a period of time. What we're really looking to focus on is getting rid of the absentee landlord process through the auctions, and we are looking to encourage and work with first-time homebuyers, homebuyers, people from the state, people who already live here, and the best part about it is, you know, if you have, you have a home and it's a house two floors down, and your daughter or son wants to live in a community, we can designate the son and your daughter as a redeveloper, they can come into rehab property, they can live there. There's three phases to understand. First off, if this passes this evening, we have to get DCA approved, which is, we've already had major discussions with DCA, we don't see really see an issue with that. The other thing that we will be coming in is with an ordinance to set up an abatement program which is allows, which would be, when someone does improvements on their house, it'd be a 20%, 40%, 60%, 80%, 100% tax process, so they purchase a home, they fix it up, they get a CO, and what would happen is the first year, you pay full taxes on the land, but the improvements, it would be a 20% first year, 40%, 60%, at the end of five years, they pay full taxes. This allows, again, the first-time homebuyer, the young couple, to get in there, get a property, get money to fix it up, and be able to live there while they adjust their budget so they can benefit from the tax abatement. That's a very large part of this. Also, for people who wanna do home improvements, take a single-family home and they wanna add on to their house, okay, so they, am I gonna add on to my house? We all go through, you see, nine people go through that. If they wanna do, say, a $40,000 addition to their house, they, we designate them the redeveloper for that process, and then what they can do is get the abatement for the addition, so they're not paying full taxes on that improvement. So, it really helps already for the homebuyer that exists and who wants to improve their property. Same thing with businesses, we can be working with businesses if they wanna do improvements in their properties, and it's not the redevelopment zone. And the other thing it does is, we're gonna have models that are simple, we're gonna simplify the process down, there would be a short redevelopment agreement that we could do with homeowners or with people who want rehab homes, and we would then be able to, we'd do an ordinance that we'd bring in front of council, council still have to make all the approvals for the sales of properties, just like they do... just like they do with other redevelopment projects, we're doing the rehab. And, um, we, we, we're trying to move that process along quicker for, for the residents and the home buyer. The, the biggest difference in rehab that I see in rehab compared to redevelopment is, there's no eminent domain in rehab, I mean, and you have to designate that in redevelopment, but there is, there is no process for that, uh, and it also, the, the biggest benefit to us is, allows us to negotiate the sale of the property, uh, which really benefits the process of, of the, it's done faster, and eliminating the, the process, the problem with the absentee landlord. Uh, as to negatives, I, I would say that I've seen this done in numerous communities. Uh, I, I've seen it done, uh, in Galway Township, which is somewhat of a middle-class, upper-middle-class community. I've seen it done at Hamilton Township, Atlantic County, again, middle-class, where they're able to negotiate. I've seen it done in Mount Holly, which improved substantially by, um, doing rehab and redevelopment. So there's a benefit to those, city, the whole, city in Newark is a rehab area. Uh, Woodbridge, which is, which is a real working-class, blue-collar community, has been designated. It, it is one of the tools in our toolbox to transition this community from a landlord-based ownership to homeownership-based community, and bringing neighborhoods back to big neighborhoods, and eliminating the fact that, you know, you have that absentee landlord who's just trying to profit, grab his profits from the city, uh, and, and sometimes very predatory landlords that we have, and it'll eliminate, try to eliminate them out of the process.
Thank you. Are there any other council members that have any questions or discussions to this?
Uh, just one quick question. Would this, um, still, so for, how do I word, support empty vacant property or an abandoned property that's been vacant for a long time and is city-owned? Does the homeowners that are, uh, the neighboring homeowners, do they first bid on it, or does that just eliminate that process too?
I, I think that if, if we rate the, the policy right, that, you know, the, the adjoining homeowners would have, um, a first right of refusal in a case, uh, you know, and we, we, it's negotiated, we want to encourage, there are what they call side block programs, where people have empty sidewalks, and one thing you really want to do through this process is we designate them, do a negotiated sale where they can buy the sidewalk, and that's a big, that, that's good for, that people want to add on to a house, but also want to have a side door, kids can play in and so forth, uh, and I've seen that be very successful with other councils I've worked in, where, uh, they do the side door, uh, adjoining programs or something.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other council people with any other questions?
Is the council president?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I have a lot of questions regarding this. So why did, I was actually hoping we would be able to hear this at a later date and have a presentation, because there's been a lot of Trentonian homeowners, there are a lot of questions, uh, if this is passed tonight, um, because they didn't have a, a real good chance to have the publicity come out about this, which would remove the auction. So, uh, certain questions, we will, uh, does every property in the city, do they become eligible for any rehabilitation money, or only abandoned properties per se at the state level?
No, every property in the community would be, um, allowed to, with improvements, be allowed to apply for the abatements, and, and the abatements are not, like, some of the bigger projects that councils talk about, these abatements are automatic, so I think we bring them in front of council, they're automatic abatements. Let me say this, we were very transparent in this process. We had brought it to council, council was fully aware of it, uh, we took it to planning board, an open meeting, uh, had a, a public hearing with it, uh, we were very open there with it, uh, and, uh, you know, we brought it back in front of council, and we have been open for questions the whole time, if people had requests, we weren't happy to answer questions, I have other council people calling, and, uh, you know, there's nothing that's been done to hide this process or deceive anybody in this process.
Well, I, although my point is, I think the general public, they're not as aware about this, and also I did not call you, I'm not allowed to call you, per the book contract, so my, that's why I have my questions, I wanted to ask, um, but I was hoping that we would have a presentation, but I'll just continue, sir. Um, so I just want to clarify, with the tax abatement, that the same rate would be the same rate whether it's a new property being redeveloped, oh, sorry, a redeveloped whole property or a home improvement, correct?
Right.
The condition.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, also, um, with that, so when our planning board was asked about the abatements, would they ask to approve as far as it was a good policy for planning, or would they ask to approve this based on it's legal and permissible under municipal government, under land use law? Did they, would they ask for their opinion on whether this would be good for the city as far as the planning department would be?
They, they were open, they were asked, they were, it was, they were open for questions. Uh, Councilman Harrison sits on planning board, he can tell you that, you know, it, it was an open discussion as much as they wanted to have, it was nothing shut down or thrown, uh, you know, we wanted their input on it, and that's the reason, have the public hearing so we can get their input on the process, so, uh, and planning board was very, very open to this, seeing the benefits to the community.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the report, Taylor Design created for housing and home development states that municipality would not be willing to lay eminent domain, which I think is great, because that's something that is a great, so as ridiculous as the here is. Um, so can you explain for those who are watching and particularly on this, um, why they can have all their concerns at these regarding eminent domain, just so they hear a few?
Well, I, I'll tell you right off the bat, is, is when you do eminent domain, you can only do eminent domain through a redevelopment plan that doesn't mean that, uh, that you can institute eminent domain to take property, okay? That is a redevelopment zone, okay? In rehab, there is no authorization to have eminent domain used, there's just none, it can't even be considered.
Thank you. And then, um, one thing, as one drives around, you say this is a great thing, it's pretty obvious that there is some improving economic development occurring, had a pretty good pace around the city, the Chilwell's, um, and due to market forces, and so that's been done about the area in need of rehabilitation designation. So with these new homes and businesses as well as projects about the forthcoming, uh, regarding Choice Neighborhood Program, which I know we're trying to find the rest of the money for, uh, why should current Trentonian homeowners in all of our neighborhoods not be worried about the designation affecting their home values or their ability to get refinancing, particularly if the entire city has a designation of eminent rehabilitation?
Well, I can tell you right, right off the bat, being an applicant for numerous mortgages in my, in my lifetime, um, no one has ever asked me or has it ever been brought up in a title source that I know of that in areas of rehabilitation. I cannot see, and like I said, the communities that I've worked in and personally know of, Galway, Hamilton, Mount Holly, um, that these have, there's absolutely no impact in, in property matters, actually, if you look at the communities I'm talking about, the real estate markets in those communities are thriving, they're, they've been thriving for years, and what it does is establishes the fact that you're getting abandoned properties quickly off the rolls and having them redeveloped as, as quickly as possible. Um, to me, again, for Trenton, it's a small guy, small guy who want, who may want to do 10 properties or five properties, or, or the single, single person who wants to rehab a house and own and improve, improve their lifestyle and build generational wealth, it's about building that too.
So, and when you originally spoke, um, and I did take notes about Galway, Hamilton Township, Atlantic County, did you also mention Newark?
Yes.
Is that done in Newark?
Yeah.
Um, and regarding the timing of this, et cetera, would it not be possible for this to be tabled or held till the December meeting, so your department can make a presentation, and then also in the next several weeks, if members of the public have any questions, that they can ask them, particularly because I, I know I will have constituents ask me about what is this going to do to my property values? And that's a fair question.
Yeah, and, and, and like I stated, I think in, in, from my experience, and it, it indicates, and you addressed this too, I, I, unless you really know something about land use, about, nobody is even going to know the difference between a rehabilitation area and a redevelopment. Understand something, we have 43 redevelopment zones in the city of Trenton, 43. We're trying to clean those up first, and what just helps is kind of an overlap, when we clean those up, we have this tool, okay? And, and, and I, like I said, I don't know, to delay it, it, I mean, I, I mean, it's one of these things that we've worked on this for at least 90 days, I think that we've, we've had this working through, working through the planning board. Again, we've got to send this, after we're done tonight, if it passes, I've got to send the, uh, DCA to make the approval there, we've got a delay there, okay? After that, if we're going to run a trial and error process, if we're just done for the abatement, which is going to take some time into January, so we're, what we're doing right now, if, if you don't pass it, we're just delaying, uh, what we need to do and need the tool for the community.
Um, well, very big concern on homeownership, particularly as it's going to help us break up the contract poverty around the city, we can create multi-generational wealth, so this is a paramount request that we get, a city that has a 39% homeownership rate back to well over 50%, which it was as recently as 2000. But we're also in a city where redlining has a history, we're in a city where, um, even just before, I would say, the crash of 2008, many of the banks closed their refinanced mortgages, 212 mortgages, they got, went through lines of credit closed to them, um, so we're a city that suffered a lot because of designation that we can't, you know, we don't have property values like they have, so it's across the border in the Ewing and Hamilton and Lawrence and so forth, so that's a really big concern for me, and I would imagine for other people, that, you know, realtors might not be a big deal for them, and I know your, your opinion is it's not a big deal, but I have a grave concern, a lot of banks might, and that's something I'd like to be able to learn more about, and kind of get more information on what that could be in some case studies, I'm sure there's got to be, at least a case study out of Newark, on how that handles, because that's, in a fire in a city, it's more like our city, it's an urban city.
I think that we have done, would actually help financing, uh, bringing, if we can get some of the, the banking funding that they must dedicate in communities, if it showed this, we have a rehabilitation area, it may actually free the mortgage loans to bring into the city. Um, I, I think it's just, uh, and they, and they're going to look at the city, we've done the ad, and say, okay, the community has done something to generate more homeownership here, the risk is less for the bank and for the mortgage company to rebuild and get the community going back up.
And then, just as I, like I said, you know, most of these projects, the, the redevelopers will need to seek financing, depending on what the project is, so that, you know, that 'll, you know, the, the financing's available, a lot of banks have programs geared towards redevelopment, so, um, I, I think this is a tool for the, the housing department to, you know, quickly, not quickly, but like, it's going to allow them to redevelop properties and, and work with these redevelopers a little more efficiently, and that will, in the long term, work to increase property values, so it's really, you know, thinking about it, thinking about the long-term game, once you get properties redeveloped and, and homeownership, you're going to increase your property values overall.
And then, such similar questions. The next one's kind of the big one that, uh, we get a lot from many Trentonians, which is, uh, would I be able to actually purchase a property versus an LLC, versus someone who is outside Trenton and comes in? Uh, some streets, there are LLCs, different variants, maybe same owner, someone can get the same LLC that owns three, four, seven properties on the same block. So how can the individual Trentonian, you know, be insured that they're going to have a fair chance to buy a house on their block or a house in another neighborhood, and not, um, if we get rid of the auction process, which I think is a good thing, um, not be hustled by a developer for an LLC?
We, council's body can set policy that, um, in, in the negotiating process, that residents, long-term residents of Trenton will have, can have first priority at negotiating the price of the house, we can take that into consideration. We, let me, let me say this right off the bat, I've, I've been approached probably by 15 different LLC people who have wanted to come in in the last month and a half and buy, buy up a bunch of properties, and we have done everything to say, that's not going to be the policy of, of what the mayor wants to do, the mayor wants to, to promote, uh, homeownership, and that we have to focus our body on homeownership. We're not going, and the best part, but you guys have control of the body, because it's a year of redevelopment in. If we walk in here and say, we're going to sell X, Y, Z, L, Z, 15 properties, you have the ability to say, nope, we're not going to do that, we're going to focus on homeownership, we want the priority to be the local people.
You, you have the ability to say they have to be owner-occupied, right? So that keeps the LLCs away, if you're going to rehab, then you're going to promote owner-occupied residences, you can do that.
And, um, we are the ability to make every single one of these properties we're talking about owner-occupied. That's something administration would also support.
Absolutely. The only one we're going to have.
I just wanted to get that out.
Well, I, I would like to do, have you got that? We have multifamily, um, locations here, that homeownership, we, we have some empty apartment homes that have four or five, and we're going to have to work closely to control, and, and the model we're going to build is, is going to be a follow-up model, where we're just not going to sell property and walk away. There's going to be timelines, there's going to be a process where we have what we're calling them, um, partner, we're going to have, I would call them inspectors, but I call them partners, the green investment partners, where our people will track the properties, first to make sure they're homeownership. Um, if, if we have an LLC company that wants to flip out, you know, we, we can work with that flipper to do that, but on the flip, the house is going to have to be sold, and, and that's how we're going to have to enforce it, um, and, and I think we can do that, and we've already started that process by denying multiple LLCs to come in and snatch up properties.
And my final question, this is a big one, is, and I'd like to hear from both, to be honest, is regarding, uh, what will happen with the zoning process, and how would this be affected and not affected, and then I really appreciate council president asking us about the pros and the cons, because that's one of the things we have to do when I was on zoning board, and also, of course, the person applying for a variance, I heard that they have to present the positive criteria, the negative criteria to a decision.
So by virtue of this resolution, nothing will happen with the existing zoning, like, if we, what you can do is adopt, you would adopt a redevelopment plan, but that redevelopment, in that redevelopment plan, you would just adopt the existing zoning. If you, if there's a particular project that you're interested in, this also gives you leeway to adopt, you know, like, a site-specific redevelopment plan that would change the zoning. So it, it, it gives you flexibility, but outright just by adopting this, nothing with the zoning changes, it's a, you have to go through another process, adopt a redevelopment plan, you know, work with the redeveloper if you have a project in mind, but nothing changes just by virtue of this being adopted.
So bulk variances and use variances would always go back to zoning?
Right, so, and it depends, if, you know, if, if we adopt a redevelopment plan based on a particular project, we, you can, as a body, you can create certain bulk standards for a particular project or a particular parcel, but if that's not in place, yes, they would have to go back to the planning board and get all the appropriate approvals and, you know, variances from bulk relief and use.
Thank you.
From the stand, from the practical standpoint, if, if we run into a, a home or property that has a zoning issue, then obviously, like, we, we will expedite the process and we're very closely with the resident, if they want to become residential homeownership. If they wanna become residential homeownership, that, you know, to expedite their process, work with them on the redevelopment plan and making sure that they get in front of zoning board in a timely manner. And again, once it clears, zoning board, I mean, that's what things are gonna have to work out legally goes housing may be the sole contingent on a zoning issue, which will be part of the redevelopment agreement. So, I mean, there's ways we can work with people to make sure that homeownership is the focus.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna start off by saying thank you to Councilwoman Williams for all the questions that she asked. Since this document was released to the public, you didn't notice on social media, there were a lot of conversations and concerns based around this resolution and what it means and what it could mean to our city and its homeowners. You know that homeownership is very scarce in our city. Most of the city is owned by government entities that we don't collect taxes from. I believe that one of the biggest issues with our tax roll and our revenue issues and things like that, the blight in our city, is because we did not have this. You know, we had a lot of redevelopment areas in the city, a few, I'm not gonna say a lot, we have a few. And the stipulations based around those were very stringent and it led a lot of properties going to auction. And as you had said earlier, a lot of non-Trenton residents participate in that auction and the properties go into their hands and we had no control over who purchases the property, what the property is gonna be used for. I mean, within the zoning variances of that area, of course, but we don't know what it's gonna be used for in terms of homeownership or renters or anything what have you. And I think that this designation would allow us to know more information about who's buying our properties. We have control over who's going to do, get it and what it's going to be used for. We would know that firsthand as the redevelopment authority. We also have an economic development subcommittee for council, which I'm a member of, and we will be addressing these issues as they come along with the administration. So we are doing our due diligence as councilwoman with the administration to come up with the best strategies that we can to return our fifteen-hundred-plus inventory of city-owned properties back to the tax roll. We have not been collecting any revenue from, for decades for some of these properties and they are falling apart and they have been presenting dangers to our communities in some areas. So I think that auctions can present and has presented many barriers for our residents in the city. They are not able to afford to participate. But if we came up with programs like the dollar program that Baltimore has done, that the city of Trenton has done under Mayor Jackson's administration, we could help city residents and those that wanna move into the city achieve homeownership at a more affordable rate and help them get access to grants and loans, lower interest loans and things like that. We would have created control with a rehabilitation designation. So I wholeheartedly support this. I supported this when the mayor was attempting to get this on a docket under the previous council, which unfortunately they did not allow to happen. So here we are again, fast forwarding a few years later, my add, still trying to do this and I can't wait until we talk about land vacations again. So, but hopefully this will achieve some of that too. So, but I love that you're talking about a hand-holding process of maybe having project managers. I don't know if that's the correct term for this, but walking people through the various steps of purchasing the property and getting through the redevelopment and making sure they're doing what they're saying, they're going to do, long-term conversation. And we will continue to delay progress for our city if we reduce this back to December. So I'm prepared to vote on this tonight. And that's all, I don't have any questions.
But I just wanted to thank you.
Council President. Thank you, Council, Council Vice President first and then you, Councilwoman Harrison. Thank you, sir. Council Vice President.
Good evening. She kind of stated some of the questions that I may have wanted to ask. But one question that I do have is, as it applies to contiguous property owners, how will this affect them? Will they have first preference to these properties still? Or will somebody else, will there be sealed bids? Like, how does that process work?
If the property is contiguous and it's non-conforming, they have, you have to offer it to both sides. But if it's, as a policy decision, if it's going to be where you wanna allow people to enlarge their lots, it's not gonna interfere with other developed neighborhoods, I mean, that can be a policy decision that makes it the fact that the joint homeowner would have first preference on negotiating the property sale. And again, that's something we have to bring back to the body and we're gonna say, hey, we've got this house, you know, we wanna be able to sell it to the joint unitary property there. The price may be a little bit less, you know, three or four thousand dollars less, but the joint homeowner's gonna provide the lots, wants to have onto the house, using that tax abatement program. So it allows the flexibility. It gives, the best part about the media from government-wise is you control. You have control of this process. So it's something we're running really, really doing. You guys are gonna be involved in it.
And being the entire city would be a rehabilitation zone, redevelopment zone. Would all of these matters come before council for approval or?
Yes.
Okay. And then just my final question, just because I'm honest and we've had this happen on council in these past few years. When it comes to alleyways and say that they're being vacated because they didn't fall under the category of redevelopment, do they now fall into this category or how does that work?
Once we've been vacated, it's negotiated, sir. So it would fall into this once we vacate the property.
Under the same standards, same pretenses. Thank you so much.
Like you had said, it's a small local developer, so which is more likely gonna be higher locally. And it's homeownership. Right now, the city regarding rental properties, we're talking what, two, three thousand dollars a month, right? Between two to three thousand for property, for rental properties, which is crazy.
Yeah, we're talking two bedrooms in the area from twenty, two grand to about twenty-four hundred, if not, if not more.
Right.
And for that, people can, you know, invest in the property, take that extra money if you can live with your parents or friend for six months while you rehab the property. And the point of project managers, that in the plan that we've drafted, it will have a whole monitoring process of forty-five days to sixty days. Actually, I think I borrowed the program from Detroit and looked at their program, why we invited real them. And I looked at what they were doing and presented to DCA today at a meeting we had and I think it's gonna help us. We've got real estate managers right now who we will be able to utilize to do this process and make sure that it gets to the CEO position. And also works with them on the abatement again and make sure they get the abatement program and say, hey, if the abatement follows up, one-page form for the abatement, a little big process and that's automatic once they get to CEO.
Thank you, Council President.
Are there any more questions from council? So just so we're all clear on this because different people had different questions that they asked. I'm gonna ask each of you, I guess those that asked the question, are you satisfied with the answers that we can move this to the consent agenda before we decide if we're doing consent or roll call vote? So Councilwoman Williams, are you satisfied to put this on consent agenda?
No, I'd like to see it as there's a roll call.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Harrison. Will you? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Edwards, you were good, ready? I just wanna, I know, we're gonna roll call that, I just want them to say what they want. Okay, thank you. And then, thank you, okay. So we'll roll call twenty-four, four, forty-four. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next we're on twenty-four, four, forty-five. The resolution expressing support for the rank choice voting. We've heard some discussion earlier from council members. Is there anything else that we wanna discuss about this rank choice voting? I do wanna say, because I didn't say anything then, but I do wanna just take a moment here now. While I understand the intent behind this and listen to backstory about it and the information and everything, I think as it applies to the city of Trenton, I don't think that this is something that would be good for us. I think that after talking to the superintendent of elections as well as speaking to the Mercer County Clerk about the process and how it would work, while the intent is to save money by not having a runoff, just the educational piece to the public would be just a lot to try to, especially our senior citizens and things like that. Like, they're used to, you know, you pick one person for mayor or the other, not rank one, two, three, and then it could fall to someone's detriment if they don't rank them and then they just pick like the one and, you know, I don't think that it votes well for our overall process. Like Councilwoman Harrison said, he and a couple others have went through the at-large candidates, we have to go through the runoff as well. It did give us an opportunity to get back out, to re-engage with the people. But also another point to this, we don't have to support the rank choice voting concept. If we want to eliminate the runoff, we can just have a referendum put on the ballot and just let the people decide what they want, if they want to eliminate a runoff election. We don't even have to entertain this and in that way, it's not confusing, it's not, you know, taking people out of sorts and it still accomplishes the same goal. So I just wanted to say those points, if we ever decided that we wanted to get rid of the runoff, the referendum, I think, would be the way to go. That way the people can actually speak on what they want in that area. I would like to say one last thing though about that too. And I'm not being selfish, I'm just being realistic as an at-large council person. I don't even know if anybody can really get fifty-plus-one as an at-large. I mean, we had nine people the last time, it was a whole nightmare. You know, I don't even know if we could consider looking to reduce the percentage. I don't know if that's like a state thing to say that if an at-large candidate obtained like thirty-six percent or, you know, maybe even visiting something like that. Not that we're afraid of the runoff because, you know, we do our thing and pull through, but just to make it more realistic in that regard. But again, to that, I thank you for bringing it forward. Councilwoman Frisbee, I understand the intent behind it. But again, we could just move this via referendum and just get rid of the runoff altogether if that's, if that's what the people chose that they wanted to do. Are there any other council colleagues that have anything else to say about this? Go ahead, Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. I've been doing my research as I stated before with this and while I understand in theory that this could eliminate the runoff some things and save us a lot of money, I do err on the side of caution of education. We just finished unprecedented historic election, right? And we saw how low our voter turnout was. And we're on the system that we're on and I feel like we need to do more with the system that we have in educating people and getting them to vote in the first place. But then to switch the system to already a voter-athlete environment, I feel like would cause a little bit of a setback. Though we are a resilient people, we can adapt to anything, my concern is losing voters and Trenton can't afford that. But also, I mean, and I'm in line supporting this, it's not a bad idea, but like I said, because of our low voter turnout in education and where we're at now, that's where my concern lies. And I think for something like this, even though this is only a resolution of support, this isn't adopting the rank choice voting, I think that to adopt something or to even consider adopting something that would affect voters of this magnitude should be by the referendum, just as cannabis was, just as changing our school board from appointed to elected. I think that the public should wholeheartedly be involved and let them decide on what they feel comfortable with. So that's where I am with things and I just wanted to be candid about that.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. My opinion is our biggest problem is whether access to polling stations and having more polling stations in the city near the neighborhoods they live in. And I think we should tackle that first before anything else, but I'd like to see this roll call. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes. So I also did some research and some questioning and to my understanding, first I'm gonna say thank you. First of all, let me back up because I did congratulate my colleagues when I did my comments. So congratulations to my colleagues and best wishes to Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner or, I've had that written down, I never said it, sorry. But back to this, thanking Councilwoman Frisbee for presenting this. I do understand her intent also. But doing my research, it was, it was a bit confusing to me because I was, it was explained to me that even though you may rank someone number one and then it's like a point system and therefore somebody who may have been in third place may eventually win if they had enough people ranked them at the third or second, second or third place. So that was a little bit confusing. As far as the runoff, yes, I would love to see us do without one, only because I just feel like if the people choose, they choose. So I too would agree that I would like to see this on a ballot so that the people can select if they would like to see this in our city or not. Thanks. And I also like a roll call.
Anyone else?
You know, I was gonna roll call, Tim.
Right, okay. Councilwoman Frisbee. Thank you. Councilwoman Harrison.
Okay, so I wanna just thank all of my colleagues for their feedback on this issue of resolution for ranked choice voting. The intent is not to worry about whether or not friends are wanting to, they're gonna do it based off of friendship or anything like that. It is about being most economically sound. So that's why I brought it to the forefront. One of the, one of the things that I got a lot, an earful of repeatedly after the seven of us were finally, finally, finally elected was the amount of time that it consumed the city, the residents with, with going out and having to repeatedly go back out there and vote and re-vote again and then, and waiting for it and then being in the middle of the holidays and then there was the rain, then there was the snow. And it was so, in my mind, it was to try and save us that. This, what we also, I don't think everyone is grasping is that this is not something that would go into law if we adopted it on this evening. This is still something that the state has to make a law. So there is time and then that goes with it. You have to educate your community, just like when all of us were using cash and then we went to cash and checks, cash and checks, we went to cash, checks and credit cards. Okay, I'm making my deposit by my hand, now I can use it and put it on my phone. All of it is about change and giving yourself the option. So it is about growing our city and we wanna make sure that we are staying along with the pace. We don't wanna be left behind. So I ask this, and I will bring it back up again at some point, but it is something that I want to think about and it's something that is going to help us with moving things forward more expeditiously. And yes, it is a financial thing and I'm not just talking about for our city. I'm talking about for our state as well because that's what it is, is about something that we'd be doing together as a collective with our state. But we have the county clerk's office, we have our clerk's office, we have, there are just so many people who are a part of this decision that we are making. So it is not just about us and that's what I'm thinking about is the long-term, who else is this affecting and how is it affecting them? And so I don't wanna shortchange our residents and say that they are unable to learn anything new. They can absolutely, all of us can learn something, whether it is new. There is something to be learned every single day and otherwise we're staying stone age. So I say those shortchange our residents, given the opportunity, when it presents itself. This right here is not saying with the next election in June that we would be doing this. The state has to first do that and prior to the state putting in, even adopting it. Then there becomes an educational piece that goes along with that. So then we all get it together so we all have a better understanding and that's what I'm trying to make sure that we don't fall behind the gap. Thank you.
Council President.
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Also, I apologize, I did wanna congratulate Councilwoman Frisbee on her victory, Councilwoman Harrison and his victory and wish to us to Councilwoman Janet Figueroa Kettner of her race. So I just wanted to... So I just wanted to, not say correct the work record, but in the last election, the reason that the runoff was run later than usual would have been the first Tuesday in December, but it was removed because Judge Leakey decided to remove it, which actually created its own expense, because I found the saddle on the Friday night at seven o'clock after we purchased five thousand postcards, and it's off the order. So that's something that was beyond our control when it went to a Superior Court judge. But also, I do want to share a concern that I think this would unnecessarily disadvantage candidates, maybe who are as well-financed, aren't as well-known, aren't as connected. And I think having a system like this, if someone, even a surgeon candidate per se, if someone who doesn't have a lot of resources, just goes out and pounds a thing and wears out their shoes and knocks on a bazillion doors against another people, they should have that chance just as much as someone who isn't resourced, whether, you know, that's this past election or the future elections. I don't think we want to take that away where the little guy, little woman has a chance to win. And to me, as admirable as this idea is, I think that would disadvantage the smaller candidate. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Roll call. Mr. Garcia.
No, sir.
We're also roll calling twenty-four four seventy-four for the executive session.
Right.
All right, so now we're moving on to twenty-four four fifty. The Department of Fire and Emergency with the disability application. I'm going to defer to Director Bridges on this, please.
Thank you, Council President. While I cannot comment specifically on Mr. Jones's matter, because he does have separate litigation against the city, separate and apart from this, I can talk about the process. And you may recall, we discussed this process before, connection with workers compensation claims. Review those. When an employee is injured such that he or she cannot perform any central function of their duties, they have the ability to go out on disability. And that disability is on our hands for a year and after a year. It goes over to the state's disability. But when we get information, be it from a doctor, that the employee is never going to be able to return to work, there is a voluntary disability where that employee goes and on his or her own files for disability with the state disability fund, or where that employee is refusing to do that, but we know that this employee is not going to return to work again. The involuntary simply means we filed it because the employee did not. So with respect to what Mr. Jones is saying, again, that's subject to litigation. But I think one of the things he did say, that he had some pretty significant injuries. And this is not a Mr. Jones, or Mrs. Jones, or anybody specific. This is a policy and process that's followed routinely, systematically, and evenly across every employee in the city of Trenton. Once we get enough information that they cannot perform their jobs because of the injury, they are offered the opportunity to file for disability on their own. And if they don't do it, we do it for them, because we need those positions and we have to fill those positions. We can't have somebody on disability forever.
Thank you.
All right, keep the talk. Is council allowed to ask anything, or are we done?
You may, you may, I mean, yes, with respect to the process.
So basically, y'all ain't pulling this table, did nothing. Y'all, we ain't gonna keep this thing going?
Yes.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions that we can legitimately ask? Well, I guess he gonna tell us if they legitimately, so if he got a question.
Allow me to, and again, let me talk the-
What they can't ask.
Let me talk the process, not this case-specific. And with any employee that we're putting on involuntary disability, we have to go to city council for that. If city council were not to approve that, that person would remain on our disability for a year. And then after that, any individual, we're not talking Mr. Jones specifically, we would then go over to the state's disability plan at a seventy-five percent voucher. So that's really where we are.
Just real quick, only, well... When it came to the, when it came to the percentage, because of what you're looking to do, based on what he is moving to do. One said, based upon how you're moving, he would only get forty percent, based, rather than if it was accidental, which, and I don't know if I'm touching it, because of the issue with the truck and all of that, injured, I guess, at work. I guess the percentage would have been higher. I'm done.
Let me jump right in.
Go ahead.
If someone is hurt on the job, in the line of duty, that is accidental disability. If they're hurt outside, if they're playing basketball, if they get in an accident on the weekend, and they get hurt that way, they can work, it's normal disability. So there is a percentage for any individual. Again, this is not Mr. Jones-specific. If someone, if a police officer, firefighter, or some work force, you know, from Ukraine, and they're hurt on a job, that's accidental disability. If it's not from a work-related injury, it's normal disability. And the employees have the right and should always consult with an attorney when they're making those applications. And if they believe it's accidental disability, their attorneys or whoever's working on their behalf can advocate for them. But that's, that's a high elevated level. That's the distinction between voluntary, involuntary, and accidental, normal disability.
I do have another question, but I think it's going to cross the line.
Basis for their injury and how they were injured. That will make the determination at the state disability level, whether or not that is a accidental disability or just a normal, a normal application for disability. So the devil's going to be in the details of what's actually submitted to make the distinction between accidental and normal disability.
Okay, so basically then, for those of us that want to know, it is involuntary at first when it goes in, and whatever that percentage rate is. Once the paperwork is turned in, on the other side, say what it was, I guess it pertains to what he said about it being accidental. If they find that that is, then things will change at that time regarding the percentage that they would receive.
And, and, I don't know.
The state will determine it, right?
I don't know what that, but I'm just trying, but I'm trying to bring it home. I'll be trying to bring it home.
Bring it home.
The employee gets notification of these filings. The employee always has the right to make their own submission. If they disagree with it being submitted as accidental versus normal, the employee always has the ability to say, no, that's not correct. I'm accidental or normal. So this is not something that's taken out of the employee's hands. The employee always has the right to insert him or herself into the process and make the arguments for what type of disability they're applying for.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead. So we're gonna go, Councilwoman Frisbee, Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Gonzalez, possibly. So Frisbee, Williams, possibly, Gonzalez.
So I just have one question, that you answered.
Wait, one second, Director Bridges.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna, so, but, I have, my question is, does the percentage change based on who filed? Who files? So the employee, employer employee change, does that change what the percentage of?
It does not.
It does not? So regardless of whatever, it's going to be whatever it is, regardless of who files?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from any of the council people with respect to twenty-four four dash fifty?
Yes, Council President, thank you. Mine's not necessarily about the thing and involuntary status, but when Mr. Jones, he mentioned about any piece of equipment that is outdated, etc.
That's, that's again, that's again, part of the litigation. We're kind of being very cautious here.
Yes, I understand.
That's over there with litigation that we have to defend. This just relates to the process. A employee who can no longer work, any employee, once the city has information they can no longer work. The employee is given the opportunity, he or she, to file for voluntary disability, because they can't work anymore. They can't put out fires, they can't run in a rescue, they can't lift a garbage bag, they can't, they can't work anymore. So they have a choice to do it on their own. And if they don't do it on their own, we do it for them. It does not change the percentage. The only reason the percentage would change is if it were accidental versus normal. It's the process for every employee throughout the city of Trenton.
Councilor May, a question for a second? Yes. Council President, I do have one more question. I was just curious if this is a piece of equipment-
Director Bridges?
For, oh, yes, for Director Bridges. I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams, sorry.
Yes. Is this piece of equipment still currently in use? That was my question.
I don't know if the equipment is still in use.
Can somebody answer that question?
We-
Oh, understood, okay.
Okay, very much, I appreciate that. So what y'all want to do with this?
Man, I'm president.
Yes, Councilwoman Harris.
Yeah, we discussed this in executive session, because there are some, like, delicate, and there's delicate details that we're like kind of dancing around, because we can't talk about certain things publicly.
Sure, we can, we more than, we absolutely could discuss this in executive session. Mr. Garcia, you can answer.
I gotta save this out of time right now.
Certainly so.
I think that moving forward, that if we ever have anything like this, it should just be in the executive session, especially if it's already litigation done. Like, you know what I mean? No disrespect, but we could have saved a whole lot of time with that. By just throwing it in here. Love you like cooked food, but we could have just, this was a waste. Twenty-four four fifty-six.
Thank you very much, Council President.
Roll call.
No, we're gonna talk about that in executive session, so we ain't doing nothing with it. I don't know what it means, what are we doing with it? We're talking about it in executive session tonight. And then we'll decide what happens if we do formal action, will we come out, right, tonight? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So it's going to be talked about in executive session tonight, pending litigation. Thank you.
Okay.
Twenty-four four fifty-six, Councilwoman Williams has a question. Yes, ma'am, thank you. So the Department of Finance, someone? Someone? Twenty-four four fifty-six, under the Department of Finance, the insertion of special item of revenue in the budget, opioid settlement. Thank you.
And thank you, Business Manager, Director Richardson. So my question regarding, as I was very glad to see it, regarding money finally being dispersed for the settlement. So two questions, is this the first initial payment on the overall settlement?
No. We have received close to four million dollars now. And we are supposed to continue to receive payments for about eighteen years.
Eighteen years, okay.
Correct.
And then as far as this use, is this money going into general budget? Or is it used for, as I know, at one point, the idea when we originally had the cannabis or the slasher, with the ten percent of the cannabis tax money going towards adaptive addressing health disparities, that hopefully some of that will be in settlement money and go to mental health addictions outreach?
This one, this money will go to different direct services, including mental health programs. That's correct. So it doesn't go to the general fund, but goes specifically for programs. So the police director and the Department of Health are working with us to develop a comprehensive plan to allocate the money to different programs, including, as I mentioned, mental health, and addiction, addiction prevention and treatment.
Would that potentially include outreach vans to get to more parts of the city?
Yes. Yes, correct.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call. Who else, consent, please?
Thank you. So that one's going on consent. Thank you. Twenty-four four fifty-eight, Department of Health and Human Services.
Hey.
Good evening.
Council Vice President.
Hi, evening. I had raised this question before in document review, just requesting that we be provided with a list of substantial services or resources or etc. that have been provided in support services from each of these organizations that were given money. You know, we're giving so much money to Path of Carriages for these homelessness services and such, and other organizations. So I wanted to see, could we receive a list of what these services are that these organizations are providing with the money that they're getting? So we're just not seeing, okay, such, 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 as receiving fifty thousand dollars, etc., to receive twenty-five, what are they doing with the money?
We can provide a report, yes, they provide a report to us in a monthly or quarterly, and we can provide that, yes.
Okay, but I did ask to receive that for an having done.
Excuse me, was it?
That was my question. We actually submitted the grant information. Each one of the recipients, they basically apply for, and they are very specific about the activities that they are going to perform or implement with this funding, was the information was provided.
Okay. Yeah, I did receive that. I presented it because-
Council Vice President, that was included with the packet that we gave you?
No, there was only monies that were included, only the amounts of money that each of them got, not what the monies went to, not what the monies were applied to. And I discussed that in document review.
No, after document review, we submitted all the applications that the subgrantees have, they provide in terms of what activities they are going to be providing. But it's usually direct service, or they provide pre-entry programs or addiction treatment and that sort of things. It's basically a program looking to prevent and remediate homelessness. And basically, all the subgrantees' activities are around that. They provide shelter and other wraparound services for homeless individuals.
Right, yeah, just in terms of transparency, like I said, I'm okay with them receiving these monies, we need these monies, but I just want to see what did they specifically, what did they get out of the money that was provided to them specifically?
Yes, we can resubmit that information tomorrow, we have it. Dr. Diego, it's piled like this, so we can send it again tomorrow.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I just want to jump in real quick. So, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
They provided what she's asking for, correct?
We did receive information, and we will supplement it to resolutions. We provided all that, we took all that information, the copies that were received, and we lumped that together for packet pickup.
And it was picked up, the packet was picked up, or do you still have it?
No, the packet remained, and we put it in front of the desk today.
So the packets with the information was never picked up?
It was all, yeah, I wasn't sure that it was ready, and it was on the desk. Thank you very much. It was just here tonight.
Thank you. They provided it before?
Yes, no, that's been here.
Yeah, it's been here?
And it was in our office, and it was not picked up.
Right, I just want to clear that up, because I know that she had asked for it, I know that they had prepared it, and I know that it's been here. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, yeah, it was, thank you.
So we're going on consent? Thank you, okay. Council- Okay, Councilwoman Frisbee has one question. One that doctor, I'm sorry, come back. Come around. Come back. He was moving one...
I'm helping you get your step. I'm sorry.
No, he was like, "I'm getting out of here."
Mine is real simple. I just wanted to know, with these funds, are there, is there room for other organizations? Like, for instance, I know that the Mercer Street Friends, they do a lot, like, right now, they're about to give the city, for Mercer County, they give out over 9,000 terpes over the month of November. At least 3,000 of those come to the City of Trenton. Is there room for us to get to organizations such as that when it comes to this funding that we have, being that they do so much and they're looking for various departments in the community, be it health, be it those who are unhoused, be it those who are just at a disadvantage right now? That's my question.
We follow federal guidelines. They're very specific on the way that we choose these organizations. So as long as they apply and they go through the system, that's how we choose them, but they have to go through those guidelines.
Okay, thank you. See, mine was simple. Hope to staff someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty, so that's on consent agenda. Mr. Garcia, 24-458. 24-461. Councilwoman Vice President has a question for Mr. Almatieri. Okay. Oh, he had to step out for a moment. Okay. So we'll move to, well, okay, we'll move to 24-466 as he makes his way back. Oh, this is him too? Okay, well, Mr. Almatieri? Come on down. You are the best contestant. Well, the council is right. Okay. So we have two for you. One is 24-461. Councilwoman Vice President, 24-458.
Yes. Hello, Director Almatieri.
Yes, Director, good evening. Pardon you, Terry. Let me talk over close.
I did ask this question, or these questions ahead of time, but I wanted them to just be answered publicly for the public. So the question being, so with regards to this resolution, I'm actually excited about it because it is dealing with safety issues at the intersection, one of the most dangerous intersections in the city. And I know that this resolution is in support of what DOT is doing to lower the speed limit, narrow traffic lines, safety improvements, remove the expressway fuel and make roadways safer for all users, adding bicycle, pedestrian lines and lanes and things of that nature, which is excellent, what we've been asking for. My questions were, that I just want answers for the public, is who will be funding this project solely? When will the improvements begin and how long will they take place? How long will it take? And will tractor-trailer trucks be diverted from turning onto Cass Street as I believe is already illegal but not readily policed?
Okay, the first question you asked was responsible. NJDOT is the state of New Jersey. They are funding this project. And as far as the trailers, the tractors is concerned, they're gonna have to divert the traffic, you know, so that people will have easy access through the road. The other thing you asked about the dates, I don't have that in my head. So I will get that back to you.
Okay, now with regards to tractor-trailers, it is supposedly illegal for them to turn off of the highway onto Cass Street, onto Lilla Street, as it stands, onto Hamilton Avenue. That was pretty much a question. I know that state police would normally police that or whatever. I don't think the City of Trenton police do that policing. So it doesn't get policed as it should. It's my understanding correct, understanding that it's illegal to turn onto our city public streets off of the highway? So I'm wondering, once this project takes place, so once it's finished or whatever, will we be readily policing that so that these tractor-trailers are not damaging our roads, our Cass Street, our Lilla Street, our Hamilton Avenue by turning off the highway?
Yes, I'm sure part of the diversion is to have that in brown states and working with the municipalities to make sure that happens, so that they stop turning illegal on that access.
Okay, and as far as funding, you said DOT, and just for the record, DOT, only DOT is funding this, none of this funding is coming from the City of Trenton, correct?
That's my question for the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we have 24-466. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much.
This is going on consent, right? Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Williams, I'm sorry.
Hi, Director. Good to see you. And I wanted to ask you specifically, because this comes up every week from constituents regarding asphalt and others with problems with the project, can you kind of go into, not in detail, but, you know, highlight what the situation is, how it got here, and when you expect, hopefully, for this contract situation to be resolved? And then looking into next year, looking into next year, obviously, we'd have a backlog because of what didn't get done this year and what the approach will be to prioritize the streets that didn't get done this year.
Council President? I'd like to answer the first part of that question.
Okay.
We are rejecting this bid basically because this was too close to be driven. And I know that we put the city in a really difficult situation not to be able to do the roads on time. But this company basically submitted a bid, it was the lowest bid, then when they saw the two other bids, they changed their mind. Right? So, and I understand, I'm the Director of Almatieri, in a very, really difficult situation, but the decision that we had to make was to reject the bid because that is illegal and I am not ready to go to jail. So that's the first part. The other part, he will be able to answer.
And thank you, thank you for that, because that's a very important thing. I wasn't happy about it, but again, she's the one with the money and the one that, because when they come for me, I say, "Talk to my boss." So, and the other part of your question that you asked, I believe in four to five months, we'll be able to start, you know, road construction in the city again because we're working on putting out the bid again to have a right type of bid that we're looking for. And then in four to five, like I said, we should be able to start road construction. And there have been a lot of road construction in the city in the next four to five months. But we have a lot of NJDOT projects going on at the same time with the city's project.
So we would be frozen, basically, from doing any work probably December 1st to March 1st?
Well, we try to walk around that time because of the weather, because, you know, you cannot do a construction when the weather is really cold. It's not, it's not gonna last, so we don't do that. That's why we said in the four to five months.
And then for next year, since you're gonna kind of need to do what was scheduled for '25 and then catch up on what was supposed to happen in '24, do you foresee a need for additional personnel for next year since all the contract?
Yes, we do, we are going to be putting out some contracts at the same time the city is doing something. That's why I said we're gonna see a lot of activities going on in our roads all over.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for consent, please.
Thank you. That's going on consent, Mr. Garcia. All right. That being said, may I have a motion? And I'll move, as we go through this, to add the following resolutions, resolutions, to the consent agenda. 24-446. 24-447. 24-448. 24-449. 24-451. 24-452. 24-453. 24-454. 24-455. 24-456. 24-457. 24-458. 24-459. 24-460. 24-461. 462. 463. 464. 465. 466. 467. 468. 469. 470. 471. 472. 473. And the Walk On For The Women's Space Lights Resolution 475. May I have a motion to put them on consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Sorry, roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa, get her.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, a motion to approve their consent agenda.
Still moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa, get her.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Onto ordinances for first reading.
No, we need roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call resolutions, my bad.
24...
We still have, like, 24-445.
444.
Excuse me. 444.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa, get her.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Abstain.
Noted. Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Onto Resolution 24-445. Resolution expresses support for S-166622A4042, authorizing use in ranked choice voting in municipal and school board elections. Madam President, if you want to motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Abstain.
Noted. Vice President Figueroa, get her.
No.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Feliciano?
No.
Motion down. Roll, uh, onto roll call resolution 24-474. And that would be the executive session. Move to, uh, next roll call resolution being...
That's it. Because we're doing 24-450, we're discussing that in executive session. Do we have to do some kind of motion to talk about that or to remove that until then? Or do we just take it in there?
I defer to the solicitor.
We just take it? Okay, so that'll be moved in and we'll take action after.
So Madam President, then if you want to ask for a motion, well, no, excuse me, then we move on to ordinances at this time. And we'll do executive session last. Ordinances for first reading and introduction, ordinance 24-072. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city home property, commonly known as 101 Holman Avenue, and identified on the city tax map, block 33704, lot 1, pursuant to NJSA 40A12-13B5 to Major 682 Properties LLC for the sale price of $2,500. Madam President, if you want to motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Gonzalez. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa, get her.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-074. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Trenton requiring the council to convene in a retreat within 60 days after the reorganization following each Trenton municipal election.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa, get her. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-075. Ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton City Code, Chapter A316, Rule 2A, governing regular meetings of the Trenton City Council.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa, get her.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-76 and ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton City Code, Section 309-69, unauthorized reconnection of services.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa, get her.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And...
Council President? Yes. Can I just go back really quickly? I'm not changing my vote on 24-074, however, I did mention it to you, I just want to put it on the record that we're gonna amend the word, excuse me, to not say mandate, to say require. Okay, three more times. That's it. We'll have six.